20, March 31st, 2020. And as you know, this order was recently sort of re-- the shelter in place order was subsequently renewed by the health officer and in ways that aren't really relevant to the way we'll be conducting a meeting this evening. But in any event, this meeting is deemed necessary. The city can conduct necessary business and it's permitted under the orders as an essential government function. As I've noted before, commissioners, the deputy city attorney and city staff will be essential to the meeting, will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there's no physical location, as I said. The public can observe this meeting via cable or live stream while sheltering at home. The meeting can be observed live on local TV channel 26 or online at www.cidapacifica.org/livestream. Public comment may be submitted during the meeting by emailing comments to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. Again, that's public comment, all one word, at ci.pacifica.ca.us. For this meeting, a public comment may be made only on items that are on the agenda. Please indicate in the email subject line the agenda item number or note, oral communications, and in the email content provide your full name, the meeting date, today, on May 4th, agenda item number, or oral communication, and specify whether you would like your comments right into the record during the meeting. Comments should be limited to comply with a three-minute time limitation. The total duration of all public comment for each agenda item, including oral communications, will be limited to 30 minutes or subject to the chair's discretion, depending on the bulk of comment that we might receive. Your entire electronic comment may not be read into the record due to time limitations imposed, and comments expressing similar positions may be summarized or abridged to provide a greater number of individual comments, but your written comments will become part of the record and will be available for public inspection. So with that said, I'm going to ask that staff go ahead and do a roll call for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Niblin. Commissioner Berman.
President.
Commissioner Bigstick.
President.
Commissioner Godwin.
President.
Commissioner Hauser.
President.
Commissioner Lille.
President.
Commissioner Niblin.
Present. And a quick welcome to our new commissioners. I know we'll have more to say about that a little further down the road. Going to go ahead and ask that Commissioner Berman lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
People of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I'm going to move on to some administrative business. The first matter of administrative business is approval of the order of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the order of agenda?
I'm-- I move to approve the order of agenda.
I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Godwin?
It was.
All right, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, excellent. Was that Commissioner-- I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So I've got a motion in a second. Can we go ahead and take a roll call, though?
Commissioner Berman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That passes six votes in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And the one thing I think, just in terms of sort of facilitating the meeting here, I'm going to ask, as we, you know, look to speak or look to make motions or look to second motions, et cetera, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and use the raise hand function on the-- on Zoom so that I think that might just work a little more simply in terms of me keeping track of who's saying what. If I could ask my fellow commissioners to accommodate me along those lines, that would be great. Thanks. So the next matter that we have is approval of minutes, and we've got minutes from March 2nd, 2020, and April 20th, 2020. We could either deal with these as one matter or we could take them singly. And I'd ask the city attorney to maybe help us with this in the sense that we've got a number of commissioners here who weren't here for that meeting. I don't think that we necessarily have to have been present for a meeting to vote on the approving the minutes, but could you explain that to us again?
Sure. So this item is just to affirm that the meeting minutes are accurate from the previous two meetings, and you do not need to have been present at that meeting as a commissioner in order to approve the item.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, my inclination would be to take these as one motion unless staff has a concern about that or unless a commissioner has a comment as to one that doesn't apply to the I don't see any comments one way or the other. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for March 2nd and April 20th of 2020. Commissioner Bigstick.
Move we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Berman.
Second motion.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. Can we go ahead and get a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Berman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
And I-- thank you. I know that there's no need for a designation of liaison to the city council meeting. That remains the case?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Oral communications then, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the commission under oral communications? Mr. Murdock?
We do not. Commissioner Niblin, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and pass this item then, given that nobody wants to comment under oral communications. And that then will take us to consent items of which there are none. That remains the case, I take it.
That is correct.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our first new item, which is the review of the 2020-2025 capital improvement program for consistency with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. The recommended sequel action on this matter is that it's exempt under sequel guidelines, section 157-- I'm sorry, 15378b4. Staff's recommended action is that we adopt a resolution determining proposed 2020-2025 capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan and the LCLUP. Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening, commissioners. I am associate planner Bonnie O'Connor. Each year, the city council is asked to adopt a five-year capital improvement program, or CIP, which comprises the known capital projects on the horizon. The planning commission's role in the CID-- CIP adoption process is determining if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal land use plan. The planning commission's role does not extend to project priorities or funding. In the 2020 to 2025 CIP before you this evening, a majority of the projects have been carried over from previous years, which were previously found to be consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. The planning commission will need to make this finding for the 28 new projects summarized in the staff report. The staff report includes references from the general plan or local coastal land use plan as appropriate to justify the consistency of the projects. Various staff is available tonight to help answer any questions regarding the projects. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution finding that the 2020 to 2025 CIP is consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Are there any questions for Ms. O'Connor, for many of the commissioners? Commissioner Berman?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, very interesting, going through the CIP projects, especially for me. But one item, just I'm confident that the city and whatever landscape management company will be used for the urban forest and land and vegetation item, it was the first item in the staff report. I'm confident that the methods will be conscious of fire safety and especially with the recent years and wildfires, even within the Bay Area, that the methods of planting will not be overdensified and that brush will be minimized. I know we have several hillsides throughout the city that has dry brush, so just for the health and safety of our community, maybe Bonnie, would you be able to kind of explain how the city often manages its vegetation and landscape management to be conscious of forest fires?
I don't have that information, but I will invite either associate engineer Marquez or senior engineer Ray Dogginus to help respond to that question.
Good evening. Brian Marquez here, associate engineer with the engineering division. So Public Works, the park staff work closely with the fire staff to ensure that the local areas that have vegetation are managed properly. However, we don't have a comprehensive plan put in place on exactly how that's done and guidelines on how to do that, and that's what this project is trying to accomplish.
Great, wonderful, thank you. That was the only question that I had.
Thank you, Ms. Berman. Commissioner Bigstick.
Sure, and mine's more of a general question. And Commissioner Berman brought up an instance of where health and safety could be of concern, which then directly raises the question of its alignment with the general plan or the local coastal plan. So my question is just, to the best of staff's knowledge, are there examples of projects that have kind of raised that alarm that it might actually be inconsistent? Or is it just that kind of thing where, you know, we're looking out to make sure that, for example, one element could be safety, but for the most part, it often doesn't come up?
I can-- I can jump in there. My name's Tina Waremeister, I'm the planning director. And so because the CIP is drafted even before it gets to the planning commission with the general plan in mind, it is not often the case that there is a, you know, a questionable project. Having said that, in a few years ago, there was some concern with the project that was in the CIP to widen Highway 1 because that was a project of concern in the community, and there were some who felt that perhaps that was not consistent with the general plan. That project is no longer in the CIP and so is not coming up again as an issue this year or last couple of years or one or two years.
That makes a lot of sense to me, thank you very much.
So if my colleagues will indulge me not seeing any other hands, I had a quick question. I'm taking it that the current CIP is assessed or analyzed against the existing local coastal land use plan as opposed to the one that we're currently in the process of working on and working on certification for. Is there any, you know, anything on the CIP? And I'm comfortable with the CIP is consistent with the general plan and the existing local coastal program, but I was curious about whether or not there's anything on the current CIP list that might raise any issues with respect to the local coastal program as we're looking to have it revised?
I don't have-- I don't have an answer for that because it's not certified by the coastal commission, it's not yet in effect here, so that review didn't occur.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was just--
I wouldn't have expected it, so I'm just curious whether there's anything that's sort of jumped out at you as obviously questionable under the--
No, I can't say that anything jumped out as being a concern for our future LCP.
Thank you. I don't see either a hands from commissioners at this point. I was wondering if we have any public comments on this particular item?
We do not.
Okay, excellent. Well, that said, I guess we can bring it back then to the-- to the commission or keep it with the commission, I suppose, and any further discussion or, you know, absent any further discussion, I'd certainly be prepared to entertain a motion if someone wanted to make one. Mr. Bigstick.
I'll be happy to move that the planning commission adopt the resolution include an attachment A, finding that the proposed 2020-2025 capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan and the local coastal land use plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second.
Okay, great, well, we have a motion in a second, so I guess we'll ask for a roll call, though.
Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. So we'll move on then to our new public hearings, the first of which is file number 2014-001. This is site development permit PSD 78814 and heritage tree removal authorization for construction of a new three-story, approximately 3,800 square foot, single-family residence with attached 787 square foot three-car garage on a new one-story, 518 square foot detached and, I'm sorry, a new detached recreation room on an undeveloped 31,265 square foot lot situated along the unimproved right-of-way Oddstat Way located approximately 275 southwest to the intersection of Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road. Assessor parcel numbers are various. There's no recommended sequel action at this time because it's staff's recommendation that we continue the meeting to May 18th, 2020. So again, the recommendation is to continue this item to the meeting of May 18th, 2020. I'll ask staff to further comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Niblin. Good evening, senior planner Christian Murdock. This item is an application that the city's been processing for a number of years. As a result, we've had different application materials submitted over an extended period of time. Having come back to this application to finally prepare it for public hearing, we realized there were a couple areas where we wanted to ensure that we had current and correct information in the project materials and to ensure that we were consistently and accurately relaying all information about the project in the public hearing materials. And so in the interest of that and in the interest of ensuring that the public received a correct description of the project and all associated aspects of the project, staff is looking to continue the item to give us additional time to prepare the public hearing material.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Godwin, I see your hand is up. Do you want to discuss the matter?
No, that was from the previous sit-- issue where I wanted to second the motion.
Thank you. Is there something, Mr. Murdock, that I need to do to sort of delete the hands after they've-- I've called on people?
I'm not sure if you have the function. The way the Zoom meeting is set up with me as the meeting host, I do have the ability to lower the hands, and I do it occasionally. I did not see Commissioner Godwin's. So if commissioners could continue to try to stay on top of their own raised hands, and I'll be there as a backup if necessary.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Hauser?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would just ask that, you know, whether this goes to later, gets continued, whenever it does come before the planning commission, that since the site is not really accessible from view to the public, that ample imagery be provided for both the benefit of the commission and also of the public reviewing the site.
Certainly, and that's something that's on our minds as staff as well, to ensure the best understanding that can be achieved without, again, being able to physically access the site like a lot of our infield development projects.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hauser. Any other comment? If not, I'd certainly entertain a motion to continue the item.
I did not hear-- I saw your lips move, but I didn't hear what you said, Commissioner Niblin.
I'm sorry, I meant to say your name. I probably was mumbling here, maybe I was tripping over my tater tots.
For whatever reason, I move that we continue the item to the planning commission meeting of May 18th, 2020.
Commissioner Hauser?
I'll second.
Great, well, we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. You know, it occurred to me, I-- well, I guess, strike that, never mind. Our next item is file number 2018-016, and this is use permit 10218 for installation of a new Verizon wireless communication facility comprised of a two-foot tall and one-foot in diameter cylindrical antenna mounted on a five-foot pole extension atop an existing utility pole and associated pole-mounted equipment in the Redwood Way, public right-of-way approximately 80 feet northeast of its intersection with Larita Way in the vicinity of 1307 Redwood Way. And the recommended sequel action at this time is, well, there isn't any recommended sequel action because, again, the recommendation of staff is to continue this item similarly to the meeting of May 18th, 2020. Maybe staff could further comment on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Niblin. Senior planner Christian Murdock. The applicant for this item is the same applicant as for the 1450 Terranova Boulevard right-of-way wireless facility the commission heard at its last meeting. This applicant represents Verizon, which is a very large corporation, as I think we all understand. They sometimes have different teams preparing their planning application materials, in particular, the drawings that associate with the proposed facilities. In this case, the applicant took the voluntary step to seek to reassign development of the plans to the same project team that prepared the plans for 1450 Terranova in hopes of ensuring that all of the information was presented consistently and in a way that would be familiar to the planning commission. And so unfortunately, given the transition that was involved in that, the applicant required additional time. The applicant is here at the meeting as well if there are any questions, but otherwise, we're just looking to continue the item.
Great, thank you. I guess a quick question, I probably should have asked this with respect to the last item as well, it occurred to me, is there any public comments on this item?
Yes, thank you. There were no public comments on the prior item, and there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, well, are there any comments or any discussion from my fellow commissioners as to this matter? Or for that matter, any questions from Ms. Wang, who is with us? Not seeing any need for further discussion appears. I'd entertain a motion to continue this item to the meeting of May 18th, 2020, if anybody's inclined to make that motion. Commissioner Berman?
I move that we continue this item to the planning commission meeting planned for May 18th, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Is there a second? Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Great, well, we have a motion and we have a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Bigstick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So the matter is then continued to May 18th, 2020. The next item then is, let's look like, looks like file number 2019-025, site development permit PSD 84319, coastal development permit CDP 40919, use permit UP 11819, sign permit S 13119, and PE 18519 filed by San Pedro Valley LLC for construction of a three-story mixed-use building consisting of, excuse me, ground floor commercial space and six residential apartments located the north quadrant of the intersection of Kent Road and Danman Avenue in the 1,200 block of Danman Avenue, APNs 023013010 and 023013020. The recommended sequel action for this item is a Class III categorical exemption pursuant to section 15303 of the sequel guidelines, and staff's recommendation is that we approve this item as conditioned. Can we get a staff report, please?
Through the chair, if I may, for just a moment, I had a number of conversations with many people who lived in the area. It doesn't influence my decision-making tonight, but I wanted to make sure for the sake of full disclosure that I indicated that I have had conversations with many neighbors about the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick, for sharing that. It's noted, and looks like we can go ahead and move to the staff report then, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Helen Gannon, and I am the project planner for the item for you. As you just heard, the project is in request of five planning entitlements for the construction of a new three-story mixed-use building consisting of approximately 3,050 square feet of ground floor commercial space fronting Danman Avenue and six residential apartments above at the second and third floor levels. As designed, the spaces could be used by a single tenant or two separate tenants. The structure would have a contemporary industrial-style feel, including materials like brick, metal, and wood siding. The project site is Zone C1 or neighborhood commercial and lies within the coastal zone combining district. The types of uses have not yet been determined by the applicant, although would be required to be visitor-serving commercial uses to be consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. Other non-visitor-serving uses may be permissible within the project upon a use permit determination. All uses would need to be consistent with the C1 zoning district standards. The project proposes to include a deed restriction that prohibits restaurants and fitness studios in the retail space. Four one-bedroom apartments and two studio apartments ranging between 570 and 804 square feet in floor area would be located above the commercial space at the second and third stories. Access to all apartment units would be from Kent Road provided at grade at the parking level behind the building, which is higher than the Danman Avenue street level. Due to the site's slope, the project is designed in an L shape so that the back wall of the retail space is a retaining wall that makes up the elevation difference between Danman and Kent Road. This incorporation of a hidden retaining wall helps reduce the amount of visible retaining walls required on the property, given its slope. The city's general plan and local coastal land use plan envisions the Danman Avenue and San Pedro Avenue area as an oceanside commercial center that could be rejuvenated and expanded to become an attractive visitor destination as well as provide for neighborhood retail uses. The commercial area proposed with the project would enable it to achieve this vision. The proposed project requires approval of a site development permit, coastal development permit, and use permit for the construction of the building and operation of a mixed-use development with residential uses. The proposed project would meet all of the city's zoning requirements with the exception of the parking exception, which will be discussed later on in the staff report. The proposal complies with all required setbacks, height requirements, landscaping requirements, and lot coverage. The number of residential units proposed is below the maximum of seven units, which could be allowed under the general plan and zoning density standards specified for the site, which would allow one dwelling unit per 2,000 square feet of site area. Therefore, staff believes that the site and intensity of the proposal would be appropriate and consistent with the applicable land use regulations. The project has also proposed a master sign program. A master sign program is required because the applicant is proposing a multi-unit development. The building would have one sign totaling 45 square feet or just 0.3 square feet per linear foot of property frontage, which is well below the standard allowance of 0.75 square feet per linear foot. The sign would be located in the middle of the building's front facade along Danman Avenue and could be split between two potential tenants or used by just one single tenant. Given its limited square footage, the requirement of coloring and backgrounds to match or complement adjacent materials and building surfaces, and all proposed signage to be approved by the landlord first, staff believes that the proposed master sign program is consistent with the city's design guidelines and zoning standards. Lastly, the applicant has requested a parking exception to deviate from the required covered parking standard. Given the size of the commercial space and the six residential units, the project would be required by the city zoning to provide nine vehicle parking spaces and two bicycle parking spaces. The applicant has proposed a project which exceeds the zoning standards for parking by providing an additional vehicle parking space for a total of 20 parking spaces and eight additional bicycle parking spaces for a total of 10 bicycle parking spaces. Pacifico's municipal code requires that for multifamily residential uses, at least one of the required off-street vehicle parking spaces per unit shall be in a garage or carport. As proposed, all parking spaces would be uncovered. The applicant has stated a number of reasons for the parking exception in its letter of explanation. Unfortunately, none of the reasons provided by the applicant relate to a practical difficulty or unusual hardship that the applicant would experience by providing the covered parking. In staff's assessment of the proposed project plans, installing covered parking spaces along the eastern boundary of the off-street parking area or the area that's closest to Danman Avenue would be feasible. Installing this covered parking would allow the applicant to provide at least six covered parking spaces in any required configuration of accessible and conventional parking spaces needed to meet accessibility requirements while simultaneously complying with the requirements of the city's municipal code. For these reasons, staff recommends denying the requested parking exception because the applicant has failed to demonstrate a practical difficulty or unusual hardship which would prevent provision of the covered parking. However-- However, overall, off-street parking proposed with the project would allow it to operate satisfactorily because the applicant has proposed a number of vehicle and bicycle parking spaces in excess of the minimum requirements for each. Staff received multiple comment letters in opposition to the project that you should have all received prior to this hearing. Staff has considered all concerns identified in the comment letters, and it is in staff's opinion that each is adequately addressed in the staff report. In conclusion, the proposed development would be consistent with and further the objectives for the subject area incorporated in the Pedro Point Shelter Cove neighborhood narrative of the general plan and the LUP. The overall placement and design of the building is appropriate for the project site, and as condition, the subject project is consistent with the zoning standards, general plan, and local coastal plan and the city's adopted design guidelines. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from SEQA, approves the site development permit, coastal development permit, use permit, and sign permit, and denies the parking exception by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A of the resolution, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. I'm available for any questions, and I know that we have members of the applicants here as well tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gannon. Do we have any questions from the commissioners for Ms. Gannon or other members of staff at this time? Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, I have two questions for staff. Thank you for the staff report, Ms. Gannon, it was very helpful. First, in regards to the covered parking. So, is understanding that it's required by the general plan, but looking deeper more in the essence of the requirement, is the covered parking in staff's opinion more required so the residential parking could be separated from the commercial parking? So is it more in an effort to keep residential parking stalls open and dedicated to the residents? Or is it literally the need for covered parking?
Yeah, me, Christian or Tina, chime in if you guys feel so. The covered parking is a requirement for residential units. So, let's say in any given, single-family residentially zoned district, you're required to provide covered parking, therefore, you know, a garage or a carport, whatever is feasible for the property. So same thing here, it's a mixed use, but it's still providing residential type uses, and so that covered parking does carry over into this type of use. And I think, for all intensive purposes, we feel that this project can still provide that covered parking. They have not chosen to differentiate between what would be commercial and what would be residential parking for this particular parking lot. But I think that would be essentially our hope.
So in staff's opinion, what if the applicant were to provide designated uncovered residential stalls? Would that so they wouldn't be covered, so I understand that it's not exactly in line with the general plan requirement, but there will be designated residential stalls for the units? They just be covered.
Good evening, Senior Planner Christian Murdock. I think part of the issue is that this standard is a zoning requirement, it's not a general plan requirement. And so from staff's perspective, we have less discretion in terms of balancing the requirement with other aspects of the project. And instead, we feel like it's a strict applicable standard unless you demonstrate a hardship or practical difficulty to waive, to to qualify for an exception from the requirement. So I think it's not a standard that we assessed as having flexibility on balance with other requirements. As far as the designation of spaces and the origin of the requirement, the city's current municipal code zoning standards do not have separate standards for mixed-use developments. And so the the standard, as Ms. Gannon was alluding to, is a regular residential parking standard that we've applied to the residential component of the project, just as we've applied commercial project standards to the commercial portion. And we have this this tension, if you will, in examples like this where perhaps on balance, it would be better not to have covered parking. So that all of the parking looked the same, and it was equally inviting to all users of the project. However, we have this zoning requirement which we need to apply to the project and evaluate whether it's feasible or not. In staff's assessment, it is feasible. The applicant thus far has not proposed to distinguish between the residential and commercial parking. I think staff would prefer to keep it that way if possible to ensure the best flexibility in in utilizing all of the spaces throughout the twenty-four-hour period that this project will be operated if it's approved. For instance, assuming most people are able at some point to resume commuting to work, there will be times of the day throughout the middle of the day in particular when the commercial business may be open, and having all twenty of those spaces available for commercial use might be desirable. With the hours that the applicant has offered to restrict operation of the commercial to six PM closing, then most of those spaces should be vacated, or at least enough of them associated with the residential use, to be available and convenient for the residential tenants to to utilize. So we think that the overall parking scheme as proposed by the applicant is desirable and certainly meets the zoning standards with the exception of the covered element.
So then, the, so, the, um, the covered stalls are still intended to be used for both commercial and residential. And so I got that from the staff report and the application material, but I don't have the COA right in front of me right now, but does the COA specifically say covered residential parking? Because I I know there was language within the staff report saying that the covered stalls would more welcome residential parking there and oppose commercial parking. I mean, I I agree with having the flexibility, that sounds great. I'm just trying to understand what staff believes is the best approach here and if it should be required for the project.
Right, I think you may be referring to our list of reasons cited by the applicant to justify the parking exception. The applicant expressed that in its experience with other mixed-use projects that it's developed, that they found that providing covered parking discouraged use of the parking by commercial tenants. That may be the case. However, the applicant has separately provided sufficient parking under the zoning for the commercial and the residential components. So even if the commercial component of the project did not utilize the residential parking that was available, it would still meet all of the zoning requirements and in fact exceed the zoning requirements by one space for the commercial parking requirement. So I'm not sure that there's a problem with that discouraged use of the residential parking, if that's in fact true from staff's perspective.
Okay, and then one last item on the parking before I get to my next question. For the covered parking requirement, is that also in the draft local coastal land use plan? Off the top of your head, sorry, that's kind of a
So again, this requirement's in the zoning, not in the current local coastal land use plan. And so I do not believe that the draft local coastal land use plan addresses covered parking requirements. Most often, you would see that type of specific requirement stated in the zoning ordinance. And we will have the opportunity to revisit and significantly revise our zoning standards after adoption of the local coastal land use plan and the general plan, hopefully later this year. And so this is a topic that we very much intend to revisit, appropriate parking standards for various types of development. But as it stands now, as staff has explained, it is an applicable requirement to provide one covered parking space per residential unit.
Okay, um, thank you. And then, my other question is involving a comment letter from the Coastal Commission. It's on packet page two fifty-three, I think it's PDF page two sixty-six. It's from Ms. Norton of the Coastal Commission. I'm wondering if staff could kind of clarify the last paragraph of request. It it looks like the request is to not allow future bluff protection in this area, which I know in the past couple of months, planning commission and city council have talked a lot with the community members and in meetings about the need to protect our shorelines. So I'm wondering if staff can kind of speak to Ms. Norton's comment letter.
Sure, I think several of the points made in that last paragraph that you referenced do touch on various aspects of land use policy that are contained in the city's draft local coastal land use plan. However, most of the points raised in the Coastal Commission comment letter in that last paragraph are not requirements that are currently in the city's nineteen eighty local coastal land use plan or elsewhere in the city's local coastal land use program. And so staff has not identified a clear basis to impose the requirements in the fashion that the Coastal Commission has requested. However, the applicant has voluntarily revised this project to incorporate many of those, and so it's an expression of the applicant's intent to abide by those Coastal Commission requests. However, with the exception of the first part of point number one about new development not requiring shoreline protection, that's the only item that staff has identified in the nineteen eighty local coastal land use plan that's currently in effect, which would be applicable to the project. However, it it doesn't necessarily make sense to state all of the aspects that are applicable now if the project's not currently requiring shoreline protection. And as as projected by the applicant's geotechnical engineer, would not be likely to have a need for coastal armaring during the economic life of the project, which was estimated at one hundred years to the applicant and its team can can dig a little bit deeper into that if the commission's interested in it. They have prepared a geotechnical hazard assessment. So, um, overall, we did not find a basis to impose the requirements that the Coastal Commission has asked in that paragraph.
Okay, thank you, I'll ask the applicant as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser, did you have some questions for staff?
I did, thank you, Chair. So picking up on a one thing that Commissioner Berman had asked, for that covered parking, the staff report does kind of give loose reference to what kind of aesthetic would be anticipated or desired if, you know, if the parking has to be covered. But can you speak a little more, like, is it trellis envisioned, what what does this look like? Yeah, I mean, I think hopefully what we would ask of the applicant is as, as little amount of, you know, bulk and height and structure that you could provide is going to be preferable to not add anything else to the the structure, but ultimately, it would be up to the applicant what they would like to propose. We don't have any particular design guidelines or standards for what that that covered parking needs to look like, so it would be up to them, but what we would prefer obviously is to have that be as least intrusive as possible.
And then I had a couple of questions about land use. So how long has the site held its current designations of commercial and C one CZ approximately?
Yeah, so Commissioner Hauser, I'd like to supplement Ms. Gannon's response to the last question. If you look at PDF page two twenty-five, I'm trying to find the packet page. On the plan sheets, it gets very small, so I'm zooming in. On packet page two twelve, you'll see the top drawing there demonstrates a trellis feature between the two portions of the separated roofline. That is the design theme that staff has written into the condition of approval. If I'm recalling correctly, I'll get you a number here in just a moment. So we are trying to tie the architecture and design aesthetic of the covered parking in with the current building architecture. And as far as that goes, another part of the aesthetic requirement relates to only providing six covered parking spaces along that eastern parking area could result in a disjointed appearance, and so the applicant does have the option of providing more than six covered spaces to ensure continuity of that entire segment of the parking lot. However, we don't have a strong basis that we've identified as staff to require all of those spaces to be made as covered spaces. And so the condition of approval is condition number eighteen. And it does describe certain certain standards that the planning director would compare against the applicant's covered parking proposal. It's on packet page two oh four. And so establishes minimum and maximum heights. And then it says, "The architectural design of the covered carport parking spaces shall be consistent and compatible with the new building in terms of materials and colors. In particular, the proposed trellis between the apartment units located along Danman Avenue to ensure design guidelines consistency. The final location, materials, and design of the covered carport parking spaces shall be subject to review and approval by the planning director."
Thank you.
And then to transition to your other question that you asked, we do not have the full historical land use information for this site available, but this designation that it has has been in place in staff's assessment at least since the nineteen eighty local coastal land use plan. And so it's not a recent change. And the council also has proposed to keep this same designation, a commercial designation for the site in the draft local coastal land use plan, except that the designation would change to mixed-use neighborhood, which would allow up to twenty-six units per acre instead of the twenty-one point eight units per acre currently allowable under the commercial designation.
Then it was a little bit hard to tell on the land use and zoning exhibit, just because it's a little bit pixelated. But are other adjacent properties currently designated with the same land use designation? Or is this kind of a a one-off lot designation?
Most of that Danman Avenue corridor between San Pedro Avenue and Shelter Cove Road, that private street, is commercial designation. The exception is on the northeast side, I believe, there is an area that's been rezoned to R one. So this is not a one-off, single site that's zoned in this fashion. The blocks, you know, in that entire segment there are indicating for essentially the same land use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser, Commissioner Big Stick.
Sure, um, so following up with my own parking questions for a moment and pardon me, I was able to go through the entire report very well, except for the blueprint parts, which some was helpful and some I had a little difficulty reading on devices opposed to paper. And it's not my wheelhouse, so it's a little counterintuitive to begin with. So my first question is, the parking spots, are those going to be perviously paved or will they be impervious?
So on packet page two seventeen, you can see that the parking lot is proposed to be predominantly pervious paving. If you reference on the left side of that drawing, spaces three and thirteen, and then carry all the way over to the right end of the parking lot, it's proposed to be pervious paving. There is a segment basically to the left of spaces three and thirteen that is proposed to be standard concrete.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the applicant is proposing to put a sidewalk in where there is none currently, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so would that sidewalk basically start where the property line is and extend into the street? Or would the end of the sidewalk end where the property line currently is at the street?
So it's important to note that the public right-of-way, as is the case in many areas in the city, is actually wider than the built street width. So what you're seeing there that appears to be the property line at the paved street level is actually still public right-of-way. And so the sidewalk will be, just for rough reference, generally sort of split by the utility pole that's closest to the corner of Danman Avenue. The other part will be basically in some portion of the landscape area along Kent Road. And the applicant might be able to explain a little bit more about the design considerations for placements of the sidewalk.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant that one then. And trying to see if I have any more in that vein before I go on. Okay, so I'll come back to that later. So my next question is regarding the deed restriction on restaurants and fitness uses. And And there was an explanation in there, so I want to make sure that I kind of have an understanding of the explanations first before I continue my question. So first of all, the reasoning behind there being no restaurants. My loose understanding, again, because I'm not an expert in the field, is there's a heightened requirement regarding something called C3, I think having to do with the way the flow of water goes or the necessary, maybe you'll explain that to me a little bit. But my understanding, the reason why the restaurants specifically were restricted was because it would add this extra architectural element into designing the mechanics of it that probably we don't want to do at this time.
Yeah, so it was the applicant's decision to place this deed restriction on the property to exclude both the restaurants and the fitness studios. So while, you know, we can all assume, we would prefer that you ask the applicant as to why they included this as part of the deed restriction.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'll be asking further about the fitness also. Again, what was alluded to in the staff report, just so that the applicant knows what's coming down the road, was comments that a councilman has made previously, and I seem to recall those comments. And they extended to such uses also as office space, like specifically when coming to a real estate business, something like that. So I was going to follow up with whether or not it would make sense to further restrict or if any of that actually has to do with the motives for restriction to begin with. And then I have one, I think one final question for the time being. No, I have two questions. And first of all, on the the section of the building, that's kind of that gray section at the side that's proposed of being three stories, on the ground floor, my understanding was kind of the front half was to be a continuation of commercial space. And I wasn't sure what the back half of that space would be used for or if that's just going to be built on top of rather than being a ground floor level on the back half of that. So I'm just trying to figure out what the ground floor level of that is, because I had difficulty figuring that part out.
Commissioner Big Stick, if you're referring to the area, if you're looking at the plans above, if you will, the outdoor patio area, that's built into the hillside, and so the applicant has not proposed to excavate that and to convert it to floor area. So the excavation at that point would stop, and so that area would be undisturbed.
And then the front half would be like a continuation of the commercial use, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I had one last question. And I didn't expect to be asking this question tonight when I was looking at the site earlier. There were people in the vicinity, and so I kind of was making conversation. And one of the gentlemen approached me as I was looking things over. And his comments were actually very positive. He had a parking concern, which I addressed, and he had a concern about infrastructure, which I was able to address to his satisfaction. And that's assuming my understanding is correct, but I feel like I'm on solid ground with that one. But he rose this concern because he's actually in favor of the development. And he was wondering about, well, the way he just began describing it was there was a sinkhole basically at the intersection of Danman and Kent, kind of in the middle of the street. And he was bringing to my attention something that had to do with some sort of underground creek system or springs. Or I'm not exactly sure what the reality is there, and I'm not sure how extensive the geotechnical assessment was that the applicant went through. So my question is, how aware is the city of any underground creek system? And could this in some way harm his construction? Because that was the concern of the resident. He liked the development. He was concerned that maybe that underground creek or spring system hasn't been fully taken into account. And so my question is, how aware is the city of that? Or I'll ask the applicant later how aware he specifically is later.
So I've heard similar reports. The city is aware of it. I believe the Public Works Department has taken steps to perform some type of repair to address that issue in the street. Director Waremeister may have additional information due to her interactions at the executive level with other department heads. But to my knowledge, it's not a current issue that's of urgent interest to the city. But I think we should confirm with Director Waremeister.
Actually, I have not heard discussion from my colleagues at Public Work about this.
And so I take that to mean it's not a high-level emergency-type situation with discovering an underground spring that would undermine public infrastructure. I did hear, again, about the street's maintenance crew, perhaps, having done some work to address that, but it seemed to be a rather minor concern.
Correct.
He was kind of pointing out to me where there appears to be running water on the street currently and strongly indicating to me if it's not as fully assessed as possible, it could be an issue down the road. So I just want to kind of bookmark that and factor it in later. Thank you.
Well, I had a real quick question or two. One is just sort of clarifying. I think I've heard it a couple of times. I just wanted to make sure as we, coming back to the the covered versus not residential parking. It's ultimately a determination of whether or not the applicant has shown unusual hardship or a lack of feasibility, infeasibility with respect to the covered parking. Is that generally the standard?
Yes.
And is that something that the commission has the discretion to weigh in on as it considers the matter, whether or not that threshold showing has been been made?
It certainly does. So the commission's obligation in this regard is to weigh all the evidence that it has had presented to it. That includes the staff report, which laid out a particular analysis of the facts as staff sees it. I believe the applicant intends to address the parking exception as part of its presentation as well. And so the commission may be able to balance the factors differently and perceive practical difficulty or unusual hardship that staff did not see in its analysis of the project. And so if that is the case, we would need to hear from the commission what those factors are that constitute the practical difficulty or unusual hardship. And then staff would likely need to return to at another meeting potentially to write the findings to support the parking exception, given that it was not analyzed and written up in the draft resolution presented to you.
So is there a history in the city of considering factors like unusual cost or sort of financial feasibility assuming that a showing were made that, you know, providing for covered parking would affect the economics of a project?
I'm sure. I'd say that cost is most often not a factor when considering land use regulations. It does come into play if it would somehow certainly render an improvement in feasible. The applicant has not presented any evidence of that in this case. There is, you know, acknowledged by staff, an additional cost to constructing this. But that cost should have been known to the developer before proceeding and pursuing the project. The requirement is disclosed plainly, and it is of record in the city's municipal code. And so that should have been factored into the decision to proceed with the project or not.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. And I guess one other question, and it really sort of goes to, I'm just trying to refresh my recollection with respect to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. That it's projects of a, there's only, there are six units here. Is it eight units or is it a different? What's the threshold for invoking that ordinance?
It applies to projects with eight or more residential units. And thereafter, 15% of the units need to be made affordable.
Okay, so there's no affordability hook here, and there's no proposal that any of these units be affordable.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that's, it looks like that's what we have from from staff at this point. So I think what we will do is go ahead and present the applicant with the opportunity to to speak to the commission about the project. I'm not sure who's going to proceed, or maybe you're going to split it up. But I'd like to limit the applicant's presentation to 10 minutes.
Great, thank you, commissioners, for having us in front of you tonight. My name is Mike O'Connell. I'm one of the applicants. My partner, Mike Penisi, is also on. He's the other applicant. We also have with us Brian Brinkman, our architect, Chris Rogers, our biologist, and Dan Dykman, our geotechnical engineer, as well as Sean Pinello, who represents the landowners. I've got a brief slide deck I'll go through with you, just highlighting some of the important parts of the project. And then I'll turn it over to Dan, our geotechnical engineer, to discuss the bluff retreat. Can you go to the next slide, Christian? Thanks. So this project is on an oversized lot. It's 14,551 square feet. It's about 100 feet wide on Kent and 150 feet in depth along Danman. There's 19 parking spaces that are required, and we're providing 20 parking spaces. Pacifica doesn't really measure projects by floor area ratio for these mixed-use projects, in my experience anyways, but we thought it would be important to highlight what that is for this project, which is 0.62. For the commercial space, there's 3,360 feet of space on the first floor. As we previously discussed, we're voluntarily imposing a deed restriction that would not allow restaurants and fitness. And the primary reason for that is those are very intense uses, parking intense uses. And we did not feel like that was an appropriate commercial use in this particular site. And, you know, we did look at alternative site plans that were more restaurant conducive and sort of, you know, aligned more to the north and faced the ocean. And, you know, what we found is that wasn't going to be as good of a design as something that was a little more urban and oriented towards Danman. So those were our primary motivations in voluntarily imposing those restrictions on ourselves. So our desired tenant is really like a local maker. We've had super preliminary discussions with Saltwater Bakery. You know, so someone like that, that maybe makes things that are wholesale, but they're also open to the public to come in and buy their goods. But you can also sort of walk by the building frontage along the sidewalk and see what's going on and, you know, how they're how they're making things. So the residential units, there are six units total, two studios, two one-bedrooms, and then two one-bedrooms with a loft. So yes, we don't quite hit the affordable requirement. We could have fit one more unit in, but that still wouldn't have triggered those affordable requirements. But I will say that, you know, the apartments, especially the studios, you know, they're affordable, you know, kind of by design because of their size, there's sort of an upper limit on, you know, what people are willing to pay for them. Next slide, please. And all the units have dedicated storage, which is, that's one of our reasons for requesting the parking exception for the covered parking, is that, you know, all of the units have a dedicated coverage storage that's accessible from the exterior. So this is our site plan. You know, a couple of things that we were trying to do with this project is to minimize the height. And one of the ways that we did that is by locating the driveway as high as we could on Kent, which allows us to sort of step down the hill, hillside, if you will, with an internal retaining wall that Helen described. And we use a set of stairs or an elevator to get from the parking level to the retail commercial space. So that's our kind of accessible path of travel is through the open pergola area on the second floor, down through the elevator stairs, and then you end up in sort of the open commercial space in the center. So what this did was it forces the building to face Danman, which we actually, you know, liked the best out of all these site plans that we studied, because it does kind of create that urban feel, you know, it's sort of reminiscent of, you know, an old downtown Main Street. But at the same time, that does not take advantage of the views the best. And that's where we developed sort of the L-shaped structure, because, you know, those units have very good ocean views, whereas the other units face, you know, kind of almost due east. We're using a bolt-out here to soften the corner and to provide space for an accessible ramp. The bolt-out also includes a stormwater treatment planer. That's going to be in the public right-of-way, so that helps the city meet their state-mandated requirements for pollutants that are leaving the right-of-way. Other things I wanted to point about the site plan is there's a, on the very western edge, there's kind of a common, you know, open space area. It's, the building is set back about 20 feet from the property there. So, you know, we're not building this out property line to property line. There's a gap where there's not a structure, and it's more of a passive landscape area that, you know, tenants will be able to use. Next slide, please. So, yeah, I did want to mention that, you know, when we met with the planning department early on, there were several site plans that we were kind of studying. And some of them were, you know, as close. We pushed the buildings as far north as we could and had the building oriented completely to the north, which was really great for the ocean views. And we had kind of, you know, had some preliminary discussions with the city about having a restaurant space up there. We thought that'd be a cool spot for a restaurant with the views. But, you know, it makes the building much, much taller because we're locating it higher up on the site and not directly off the street, which is where we were at the lowest elevation. So, you know, the more we studied that, the more we thought that was going to be a better design and be a better fit for the neighborhood. And it kind of embraces some of the features of the old neighborhood. You know, many of the buildings on, the older buildings on Danman are actually very close to the street, especially on the west side. And we're trying to work with the existing topography. As I mentioned, you know, locating the parking entrance as high as possible on the site, that reduces the retaining walls that are required. And we're using the back of the space, back of the commercial space as that retaining wall to provide that elevation difference. Next slide, please. So I want to discuss a few of the architectural features. So it's certainly a contemporary kind of building, but we're trying to give a nod to some of the older buildings that you might see on the Samatao coast. We engaged a historical consultant, historical architect, as part of this project, as we did on 277 Kent, to evaluate this building in context of the other, they're not designated as historical buildings in the neighborhood, but they are old. There is, you know, the former Tobin Station and the firehouse and some of the older buildings on that street. And so some of the elements that we included in this in this architecture, you know, to break down the mass, because it is, it is a long building along the Danman frontage. But we do have a sizable break at the second floor mid-block, and there's an open parched entrance at the commercial spaces. We're using different kinds of materials for the siding, different colors. There's several different types of windows. Trying to make it look like, you know, two older buildings that might have been built, you know, next to each other in a zero lotline condition. And then we were including exposed rafter tails, which is similar to older developments in Feudra Point. Next slide. So I wanted to bring up these images because I think they do a good job of illustrating the scale of the building, right? Which this was really one of the pivotable pivotable items that we discussed with a historical consultant, what this corner would look like, how it would relate to the firehouse. And as you can see, I think we did a nice job of, you know, managing that height-wise. Next slide, please. So here's a view. This is looking looking south at the end of Danman. Again, you can see how the scale compares to the other existing buildings. We're at about 28-foot height for 2/3 of the building, which is 80% of the allowable height. And then the other third of the building, I think we're at 33 feet 8 inches, something like that. So we are, you know, trying to maximize the views in the in the north of the lead portion of the building. But we're doing that with, by building that third floor into the roof line. And so if you look at the cross-section that's included in the plans, you know, there's not a ton of headroom, but there are some large operable skylights that you'll be able to open. And then there's more head- And then there's more headroom on the back, the back half of the building.
Mr. Kind, let me ask you to take another couple of minutes and wrap up because we're, we're at ten minutes.
Okay, sure. Let me just turn it over to Dan Dykman, our geotechnical engineer, just to give you a brief overview of the the bluff study. And Christian, if you could flip to that last slide or second to last slide.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe the next one, Christian. Thank you. Dan, go ahead. Dan, you're on mute, if you're talking.
There we go. Let's try that. Hopefully that looks a little bit better. As we discussed, oh, it was about a week, two weeks ago when we had our last meeting. The, the various different maps are published by the US, by USGS, by this Pacifica, that are our guidelines, that help us understand as developers, planners, when it's time, we really need to look very carefully at something. This site does creep into the areas, particularly in the USGS, which is very, a very gross high-level look at the site. And then getting into Pacificas, which is getting much more site-specific. We have a portion of the site that looks pretty good, a portion of the site that is in your area. Therefore, it's one of those things that we need to look at. We've gone through and done a site-specific study where we look at aerial photographs going back into the nineteen fifties. Our, our analysis for our report went from nineteen fifty-five to the year two thousand, because when historical aerial photos are available. After that, we get more into the, the Google Earth-style photographs, such as you're seeing here. In our analysis for fit nineteen fifty-five to year two thousand, we had, depending on where we were along the bluff, you had a bluff retreat rate of anywhere between point one of a foot to point three-five of a foot. These are reasonably low rates, in large part because the angle of the bluff here to our oncoming waves is kind of at an angle, so we're not taking the, the big hit from the ocean here. We then went back after our original report was done and did a look just at the last fifteen, twenty years through Google Earth. And we found the rates were up a little bit. They ranged up to as, the maximum was about point six-two-five feet per year. So we used that point six-two-five number and projected that back. And we got, obviously, about sixty-two point five feet of, of retreat as what one would expect in the next hundred years. Whether we're likely to stay at that, that rate or not, is anybody's guess based on global warming, but we figured if we use the radar the last fifteen years, it's going to be closer to what anybody might project coming out of the future with global warming. In terms of the water appearing on the street, assuming it's coming from the uphill north area, which is where I saw a little bit of seepage coming through, that's most likely rainwater, there's or irrigation water that's percolating down through the thin layer of upper soils. And then migrating downwards with the normal hillside. And what happens is when it gets to the street, there's the cut for the street, so you can have a nice flat street on sloping ground. And where we intersect or get close to that junction between soil and bedrock, the water is percolated through the soil, hits the bedrock, doesn't really want to flow through that, so it flows on top of it, and therefore merges out onto the street. So I don't think we have a quote-unquote subterranean stream per se, just natural groundwater seeping out over the top of bedrock. I did not notice a sinkhole in the street. It may be because the guys had taken care of it before we got to see it. Typically are, when we get quote-unquote a sinkhole appearing in the street, most likely it's due to pipe separations in your sanitary sewer line or your storm sewer lines. Those are the most common reasons for sinkholes. Sometimes you get just a straight depression due to poor backfill of a trench. I was, when I was out there, I didn't notice anything that caught my attention enough to make a note of it. Obviously, we're not allowed to drill out there because it's not our property. But I didn't see anything that even caught my attention enough to want to look further at it. So from our analysis, bulk of this project is in a farther away from the more rapid section of movement, which is slightly in this photograph up to the upper left. Now would have been, faster rate would have been closer to the parcel we talked about last time. We're getting a much wider berth here as we get down with further to the southeast with, between our bluff and the project site.
Thank you, Mr. Dykman. That, that again is a somewhat in excess of ten minutes unless there's something essential to add. Let me go ahead and bring it back to I guess. And I'm going to ask now whether or not we have any public comment, folks waiting to, to, to comment. I know we've received a number of emails, which we've all had the opportunity to take a look at and are part of the administrative record for this matter, but, Mr. Murdoch, do we have a, a public comment for this item?
Certainly. We've received three public comments, and I will read them momentarily.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meblin, this is Commissioner Berman. Will we have an opportunity after public comment to ask the applicant question?
Yes, I'm going to bring the matter back after public comment to the commission, and at that point, we'll be able to, you know, take any due care to.
And so just for the public's knowledge, I will read these written public comments up to the three-minute time limit customary for public comments during the meeting. The first comment is from Dan Shugar. He says, "Planning Commission, our family with a home on address on Kent Road strongly opposes the reference project on Kent Road and Danman Corner. There are so many things wrong with this project for our neighborhood that it's hard to begin. It does not meet requires of scale, covered parking, setback, neighborhood fit. We have reviewed Mr. Cassius's concerns below and also agree with those. We are supportive of reasonable development on this parcel, which could include one or two homes or a reasonable mixed-use project with appropriate setbacks. Please see image below. Which should most homes on Kent Road have a fifty-to-sixty-foot setback. Even garages have ten-foot setbacks. Do not allow this monstrosity to be constructed, please. Respectfully, Dan Shugar." And it includes a graphic that shows an aerial photo of the project site and then adjacent development along Kent Road, single-family residential development heading to the west. And it draws a line across certain parts of the sites to demonstrate what the commenter believes is an average residential setback as compared to the proposed setback of the development. The residential setback is considerably greater. The proposed setback is very small, as noted in the staff report. And then the letter goes on to forward a comment letter from Sam Cassius, which the commission previously received. The next public comment is from Camille Keating. She says, "Dear council members and planning staff, as lifelong residents of Pedro Point, we are writing to convey our concerns to the proposed development on the twelve-hundred block of Danman. The scale of the design is out of character for our small, mostly residential, residential neighborhood, and its density is inconsistent with the coastal charm of the area. Similarly to the newly erected commercial building on San Pedro Avenue, though the design may seem visually pleasing on paper or in a downtown area, in person, it is gargantuan in its relative size and feel to the adjacent homes and detracts from the quaint coastal feel of the neighborhood. The Pedro Point area is known to be beyond max capacity for parking on any given day, and apartments and commercial businesses of this size will generate overly burdensome traffic congestion in our narrow streets. Residents are already feeling diminished quality of life due to the influx of traffic and beachgoers with lack of public parking and nearby commercial spaces not providing adequate parking. This adds to a safety concern if there are minimal sidewalks on our streets and the additional buzzing of cars makes for unsafe pedestrian access. With only one entrance and exit to Pedro Point, the continued approval for large commercial and mixed-use projects and additional traffic puts our residents at risk in the case of evacuation. How will we handle this amount of additional traffic exiting the Pedro Point area should there be an emergency? For these reasons, we are not in favor of this addition to the neighborhood in its present proposal. Thank you for your time and energy in deciding what will continue to help the residents of Pacifica as well as keep our city quaint coastal character. Sincerely, Camille Keating and Jason Grittusby of Shoreside." And then the third public comment received is from Sam Cassius. It appears to be a supplement to an earlier written comment that was forwarded to the commission. This email says, "Sorry, I forgot one attachment of a USGS research article, which is attached." The article is from a publication Scientific Reports. The heading is "Dynamic Flood Modeling Essential to Assess the Coastal Impacts of Climate Change." It goes on to talk about certain research related to climate change. I'm not able to summarize it adequately, given its length of thirteen pages. But it does reference certain quantitative models and so forth relating to sea level rise and shoreline exposure. That concludes the public comments that we received.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Well, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the public, and we ordinarily afford the applicant a brief opportunity to respond to any public comments received. And I think we'll go ahead and do that here, but again, I'd ask you, in light of the time that's been taken already, that you keep any responses brief, if there's anything you want to offer in response to public comment.
I think our response is covered by the staff report, essentially. And so, you know, regarding the sidewalks and the parking, you know, we know that's important to the neighborhood, which is why we endeavor to exceed the parking requirement. We're constructing new sidewalks as part of the project. And, you know, the reason for the limited setback on Danman is that, that's similar to what's provided on the block of dam in between Kent and San Pedro Ave on the same side of the street, and the fifty-foot setback that most houses have on Kent are single-family homes that are oriented towards the ocean. So, you know, that, that didn't really align itself well with this, with this project.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Okay, we'll go ahead and bring this back then to the commission. I'm going to ask at this point whether or not commissioners have comments, questions, discussion, what have you. Commissioner Biggs, you had your hand up first.
Sure, and I wanted to ask questions before getting into any deliberations. And so my first question was just to follow up on that idea that there might be water underneath. And again, the gentleman, and he was the gentleman who, by his account, built the built the property. One of the addresses was twelve sixty-seven Danman. There was like, there's three different addresses on the one building, but apparently he's the guy who built it, and he was offering that feedback as, apparently he's, he's a home builder himself. So he was offering that up as a matter of, I think, professional courtesy more than anything, and it might not be a bad idea to follow up with him if we come through deliberation and find that at this time, we don't think it might be substantial. You might just check in with him. Apparently, he's been monitoring it fairly closely. He's noticed a few different sinkholes that have formed as a result of this idea, and he strongly recommended that as a matter of professional courtesy. He wanted to get that information to you. So that having been said, getting back to the, the sidewalk, and it seems like I'm going to ask a simple question. And I mean, I'm referring to myself as simple as I'm asking this question. And you showed that one image of where the property lines. It has the, the purple image. I don't know if we can put that on the screen, but I'm just trying to get a sense of where that sidewalk winds up, and is the sidewalk, does it begin essentially where those cars are currently parked today? Or does it actually go a little further back into the hillside than that?
Commissioner Biggs, could you clarify which graphic you were referring to?
The applicant was showing a graphic at some point. The property line itself was outlined in purple.
Okay.
I think it was the last graphic from the bluff retreat image. But to answer your question about the sidewalk, it's, it's effectively the back of the sidewalk will be at the back of the property line, will be at the property line. And the property line is a few feet in from where that power pole is right now. So it will go into the slope a little bit.
Right. I think looking at that picture, it looks like there's green space that will be covered over by sidewalk. Is that fairly accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And I, for all intents and purposes, this is the simple question. People will be able to park along that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, there's still parking.
Okay. And then my other question, oh, okay, so I have two other questions, one of which being getting back to the idea of there being no restaurants or fitness uses. You said that's, that's mostly to kind of keep the traffic for the uses down in that space? That was the idea?
Correct.
Okay. My question for staff is, does it specify in the language that it's to be a visitor-serving use, or does it not specify that language?
Correct. So the property is zoned C-one neighborhood commercial, but because it's in the coastal zone, so anything west of Highway One, it is required to be visitor-serving.
Okay, so the follow-up question is, with that in mind, and again, I recall myself present when Councilman Mike O'Neill was expressing his concerns about revenue generation essentially for the city. We're already restricting restaurants and fitnesses from being there. Might it be appropriate to restrict something like a real estate use since it's not essentially necessarily a visitor-serving and won't necessarily bring in the revenue to the city? And I appreciate I might be outside my scope at this point.
So I'll go ahead and, and jump in there. So, revenue generating and visitor-serving could mean the same thing, and they could be different. And when property owners are looking to cite a tenant, sometimes that analysis is very, very, I would say, fact-specific to the type of business that is going in there. The, I think that code does contain some checks and balances there, and that if if it's a use that's not strictly listed as a visitor-serving use in our code, then there could, there's a, there's a determination process that, that we go through, and I think there has been at least one of those while you have been on, on the commission, I believe, where we need to report to the Planning Commission the decision. And if you don't agree, then there could be a full use permit process for that use that is not a permitted, that you, that the, that the commission disagreed that it's not a permitted visitor-serving use.
Okay, so we're fairly confident that the process ultimately will kind of bring out anything that's not visitor-serving?
I believe so. I, I believe that there's been quite a bit of conversation about this at the council, so I think with every project, we're getting better I think, direction as to the interpretation of, of those, those codes and ordinances. And I would open it up to my colleagues, Helen or Christian, if they have anything to add to that.
Yeah, thanks, Tina. So the use permit determination process that's been mentioned, it, it doesn't enable any uses that would not otherwise be permitted under the zoning. So if you're familiar and comfortable with the range of uses that would be in the C-one neighborhood commercial district to begin with, then you're not going to see anything that's beyond that in this location. With the exception of visitor-serving uses, which are more broadly defined than some of the other commercial uses in C-one. But that's a requirement of our local coastal program to allow those types of uses, and by and large, they're appropriate in the coastal setting. The other point is that the use permit determination process does require us, as part of the process, to evaluate the balance of visitor-serving uses in the vicinity. So in this location, where there are few functioning commercial uses, it would be a high bar in terms of evidence of the surrounding area to conclude that there are sufficient visitor-serving uses that this particular use would not throw off the balance. And so in other places like along Palmetto or in the Manor District, there are already a lot of visitor-serving uses, and so it's a somewhat easier analysis. In isolation here, in this part of the Pedro Point neighborhood, there are not very many, so that would weigh into staff's analysis of a use permit determination.
So the deed restriction notwithstanding, staff will be analyzing for whether or not it's a visitor-serving use period?
That's right. So the city zoning says the only permitted use in the coastal zone in a C-one or C-two zone is zone is a visitor-serving use. All others may be allowed, subject to a use permit determination, and only if they're already permitted or conditional uses in that zoning district.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is Michael O'Connell, yes, hi, welcome back.
I'm here, I turned the video off because it was freezing on me.
Yeah, I I apologize when those technical glitches happen. I'm familiar with them, and they are not happy. So my question for you is, and again, this this comes off as simple, I'm sure, for a completely different reason. What was the motivation behind choosing gray as the color for that last chunk of the building? And how different is the material used on the outside? Is it the material itself going to wind up being that gray color? Or is there a paint palette of some sort that determines that?
Yeah, that that's the color that comes from the manufacturer. So we were just for, you know, something that looked something like that, but that is not going to rust and weather. So that this particular material, it's not like Corten steel. It's it's corrugated, it's a special, like, hybrid of galvanized metal and aluminum that doesn't rust. And the color comes pre-pre-prefinished, so there's no, there's no painting involved.
Is it possible to have a different color of that material? Or is that material set on that color period?
They have several options for that, that, for the colors that you can get with that material.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick. Commissioner Hauser?
Hi, thank you, Chair. And I have, excuse me, I have a lot of questions for the applicant, so I apologize in advance. And so have you done any public outreach or community meetings? There were a lot of comments that we received on this, and I want to understand what your level of engagement was.
Yeah, so my partner, Mike, can speak more to that, but we did not do any community meetings. You know, we tried more of a one-on-one sort of approach. He lives in the neighborhood and knows most of the people in the neighborhood and has been talking to kind of the key players for a little bit, if you will. And we also included our names and phone numbers on the on the noticing, which is not typical for applicants to do. So, Mike, I don't know if you want to talk for a minute about your outreach and who you've talked to? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Am I still on mute?
No, go ahead.
No, yeah, so I reached out to as many neighbors as I could personally. And I got mostly positive responses. A few on the fence and and a few negative, but we didn't really set up any other meetings or anything. We did include our phone number. And I think anybody in the neighborhood knows how to get ahold of me if they, if they wanted to reach out to me. I feel like it's been around for a long time, this project. And I've emailed it to various neighbors and brought people copies and plans and just kind of made it known. This is, this is where we're at today. And I think, I guess there's a lot of opposing letters, but there also are a lot of people that live in the community. And I think based on the amount of people that live here, it it didn't get too negative of a response. And that is because we did talk to a lot of people. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So I think you covered this in your in your presentation, Michael. But is the building, it looks like it's a mix of three stories and two. The staff report calls it out as three. But can you remind me again what percentage is two stories?
Sure, so it's about two-thirds of it is two stories, and that's mostly along Danman. And then when you get to the end of Danman, it transitions to, you know, the the third floor, which is basically a loft that's built into the roofline.
And are many of the other structures in the neighborhood two stories?
Yeah, most of them are two. You know, I've engineered a lot of houses for people in that neighborhood. And I think every house of engineer has been, almost every house has been three stories. It's just, it's kind of what people do in the neighborhood to, you know, take advantage of the view.
And I really appreciated the renderings where you you fit your, you like nestle your site into the Google Earth image. And can you tell me for the property across the street, the firehouse, is that kind of monument the same height or higher than what you guys are proposing as far as your three-story elements?
Our three-story element is a little higher than that. And I don't know if we can pull that up, but yeah, I, we didn't measure that, so I don't know exactly how tall it is. But I think it's around the same height as the residential buildings next to and so it's our and so it's our
So I I understand that there are retaining walls that are probably, it looks like about four to five feet along Kent. What material will those be? And how are you planning to address the aesthetics of those visible retaining walls?
They're they're concrete walls, but there, I think we have a condition where we are using colored concrete or another sort of material to the satisfaction of the planning director to enhance them.
So poured-in-place colored concrete, like not CMU?
Correct, yeah, like on the parking lot side, on the east side. And then at the corner of Danman, there is a retaining wall there for a section of it. As you move up Kent, that will be, it will include the brick facade.
Okay. And then I believe the staff report said these were apartments and not for sale. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, they're for rent.
Okay. And and so is there a maintenance plan? Or like how how, you know, you spoke about not having materials that rust and having long-lasting materials? What's the mechanism for maintenance, if there is any?
I believe there's a standard condition of approval that requires that the the project be, you know, upkept. Mike and I are super particular about our properties, so and that's not to say that we'll have this forever if it's approved. But we do keep up with our, you know, our other properties we own in town.
Are you guys planning on solar?
I think the new code requires it, so I don't think it's a condition of approval. But I'm not, I'm not sure that we would voluntarily put it in. But I think we are under the new energy code, which will require solar and limit the gas appliances, so.
Okay, so like provision of panels, not just a pre-wire?
Correct.
Okay. And then would you be open, now that the joint poles are conditioned to be undergrounded, would you be open to adding a second street tree in that landscape bullabout?
Yeah, I think as long as as long as it fits, I think we have space for that. Oh, you're talking about the one that's further down on Danman?
Yeah, the northward one. You have a strawberry tree in the south one.
Yeah, I would, I'm not opposed to that. We might want to consider that we eliminate the bullabout at that location. The only reason for the bullabout was to protect the joint pole. And it, you know, provides that much less parking if we keep it for the tree. I would like to have the tree, but I know the parking's valuable to the neighborhood.
And as far as the type of tree that you guys have selected, which is the strawberry tree, those drop a lot of fruit. Would you be open to changing that? Or was there rationale for why you selected that type?
For some reason, they do super well in Pacifica. Every strawberry tree I've seen survives, and they do drop fruit, but they seem to tolerate the salty air pretty well.
And bear with me two more. So it looks like your top of plate on the ground floor is eleven foot, or sorry, eleven foot eleven or eleven foot one? So are you, okay, are you anticipating a nine-foot-one clear ceiling height in the commercial?
Well, if they decide to put a drop ceiling in, that would be, that would be the plan, yeah.
Okay, so two feet from top of plate to top of ceiling? Do you feel that for the uses that you think would be desirable, that that would be, it's kind of leading you. I think that that's really a small, clear space. Most commercial ceilings are twelve feet.
And it's, it's not, it's not that kind of, we don't envision it as that kind of commercial space. You know, on our, on our building at five thirty-five San Pedro, which is the new building in the shopping center, if you're familiar with that, that's got a fifteen-foot plate. And that's geared towards a more, you know, sort of, you know, potentially national commercial tenant, right? Where they have very strict requirements for, you know, we're not even going to lease your building unless you have a minimum, you know, clear width to the ceiling. And so we don't think that this is that type of commercial space. We have another, you know, mixed-use building in Sharp Park that we built with eleven-foot plates. And, you know, one one tenant dropped the ceiling down, and another tenant, you know, left it, left it up and just had exposed mechanical. And so for the type of tenant that we envisioned there, we we think that's enough room.
And and then my last question for you, and then I have one for staff, is vinyl windows. I'm not opposed personally to vinyl windows, but are you, do you have a particular line in mind? Are you thinking about something with a little bit of a bevel? Or is it going to be like a style line mill guard, you know, flat vinyl window?
I think some of the windows are, maybe Brian can jump in and talk more about the windows since since he drew them. But there's different kinds of windows, so we might, they might be even simpler mill guards for some of the simpler windows. But I think like the windows on the ground floor, the arches are aesthetically driven. Brian, can you jump in and comment on that?
Yeah, we have anticipated the style liner, some similar type line for the the primary windows. The ground floor with the commercial space would likely be more of a commercial storefront-type window. All-weather or something along those lines.
You're thinking metal storefront window system on the ground floor and style line on the second and third floors?
Yeah.
That is all I had for the applicant. The only other question I had for staff, and I meant to ask it before. As far as the erosion control, is the applicant or is the, while construction is going on, are there special inspections that would be going on that confirm what Mr. Dykman's report says?
You know, I'm not a building official, so I'm not entirely sure that I can adequately answer this. In my experience, I'm not aware of special inspections that go on. There sometimes are additional geotechnical reports that are submitted during the building permit process. They may have additional detail, sometimes additional borings and so forth. So that is something that might accompany the building permit review.
Thank you guys very much.
And Chair, if I may, I want to clarify two points. Staff did not include a condition of approval in the recommended resolution addressing retaining wall finishes. Our assessment was that the retaining wall materials as proposed were adequate and complimentary to the building design. However, we do have a standard condition of approval, which we could read into the record if the commission felt that something other than the proposed concrete retaining walls were desirable. Secondly, I'm hoping that the applicant can confirm his understanding of whether he's undergrounding any of the utility poles. That was not my understanding. My understanding was that utilities would be installed underground from existing above-ground utility poles. And so I heard Commissioner Hauser refer to undergrounding of utility poles and installation of trees in their place. So if you could confirm, that would be helpful.
Well, this might be a good time just to get clarity with respect to the the point you've just raised regarding the undergrounding. Maybe the applicant can speak to that, just so we're on the same sheet of music.
I'm sorry, I got kicked off there, and I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
Mr. Murdock, could you restate the the question real quickly?
Of course, there was a brief discussion of retaining wall finishes and standard condition. And then Commissioner Hauser referenced undergrounding of the utility poles. Could you clarify if that's part of your project?
It's not something that we proposed. I had thought she was referring to a a condition of approval.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. So that's not part of what's been proposed, just so that we're all clear on that. And and then I guess we can save until deliberation, any, any, you know, whether or not we're going to want a condition of approval that speaks to, I guess, finishes on the retaining walls.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser, was that, was that all of your questions?
It was, although I would love clarification from Mr. Murdock, because I didn't see it in the plans. Maybe I just missed it, as to where those finishes are.
I think we interpreted them from the renderings and the build, the elevations. They're not featured prominently, but it's not something that we took objection to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Berman, it looks like you had some comments or questions.
Yeah, I just have a few. One, in regard to just the nearby character of the neighborhood and the firehouse in particular. Mr. O'Connell, would you be able to speak about, I know you had the historic review of the site and the context around the site? In particular, the brick being used. Now, I I really enjoy the aesthetics of the proposed building. But I'm wondering, in regards to the firehouse across the street, if if brick was recommended by the historical review of the site as complementing the firehouse? Or I just want to make sure that the brick doesn't kind of overpower the character of the firehouse?
If I remember correctly, the firehouse has like T111 siding on it right now, which is pretty outdated building material. So, yeah, the brick was something that, you know, we, we liked it because there's not any other brick buildings like that in town. And Pedro Point is a pretty eclectic little neighborhood. There's a lot of different styles. And, you know, we we thought it fit in. The historical consultant did not take exception to that. And, you know, thought that the the variety of materials did fit in good with the neighborhood because there's a lot of different architecture out there.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I know you don't know what tenant will occupy the commercial space, but I'm wondering if you or your team have looked into the logistics of delivery service and where the loading or unloading would occur? Just to confirm that it's not going to hinder either the parking lot on the property and residents there and as well as not hinder the local street parking? I don't know if they're going to be off-hours or if you've even considered that, give me that on the tenant.
We've, we've only considered it to the extent that we know smaller deliveries vans and, you know, smaller trucks can access the parking lot. You know, if if we do ever get all back to commuting and ten of the parking spaces are empty, then they would be free to load, you know, back there without disrupting the the residential tenants. Otherwise, the loading would be, you know, from the street when it's available. But because it's not like a restaurant tenant that would get, you know, a semi-truck delivery of of goods every week, we were less less concerned about that. It's more, it's going to be more akin to, you know, the types of deliveries that all the other people are getting out there right now.
Okay, in your opinion, that type of delivery service, do the local residents have any issues or complaints with with other, I guess, commercial properties in the area and their delivery service on the street?
I I haven't heard of any complaints. You know, the the big one is grocery outlet. They get a big delivery, but their semi-truck, you know, navigates that parking lot pretty well. So I haven't heard any complaints myself.
Okay. And then my last question, just coming back to my previous question for staff. And I know in your letter to staff describing the project, you included language that related to the coastal commission's comment on not providing future coastal armoring or or bluff remediation. Do you, I'm wondering, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, you obviously included it in your letter, but are there any concerns for the the property? If this property were to be sold to someone else, are there concerns? If this property were to be sold to someone else, are there concerns? In the future, maybe a hundred plus years down the line?
Yeah, good, good question. And this is becoming, you know, sort of a more standard, um, request or condition from the coastal commission. And so, you know, it isn't, um, it isn't unfinanceable, if you will. Um, I think, you know, a savvy buyer, uh, if the property was ever to be sold, recognizes the inherent risks of, you know, purchasing something this close to the ocean. Right? And so those conditions are in place or they're not conditions, but it's something that we're willing to impose on ourselves. You know, because it provides that, uh, disclosure to potential buyers, right? That, that, you know, there are hazards. We've done our analysis. We don't think it's an issue, but, um, you know, it's, it's kind of like, you know, the earthquake disclaimer you get when you buy a house in California. Um, and so that was our, you know, thought process behind, um, being, being willing to include those conditions at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate your responses. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Um, Commissioner Liao.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have one question as it relates to, uh, security for the elevator and restrooms on the ground floor. Um, it looks like it's basically, um, free access off the street and given its location in a, um, a commercial area as well as proximity to, to the coast. Um, other than lighting, what other security measures will be in place? For the restroom and, and elevator in particular?
Um, I'm, I'm not, um, super well versed in elevators, but I think there are, are ways to, um, you know, sort of lock them out after close of business. Um, so once the business is closed, it's, it's kind of like a door to the business. Once the business is shut down, you can't get in the elevator um, to get downstairs, but, um, I, I'm not, I'm not an elevator expert, but I, we, you know, we had internally envisioned some kind of, you know, lockout mechanism or a, like a key fob. If you were going to use it after hours and, you know, you're the, um, you're the tenant and you're bringing something in after hours or you needed to get there after hours, you'd be able to use your key card to access the elevator, but, um, the general public would not.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Liao. Um, I guess I had one question, not seeing any other, uh, hands for the moment. And, uh, I was wondering if the applicant wanted to give us, uh, the applicant's best, uh, case for the covered parking exception that's requested here. Uh, you understand that staff's recommendation is that that be denied? And I just wanted to, uh, hear from you all, what's your, uh, again, what's your best spin on why it is that we ought to see things differently?
Well, we really feel the parking code is outdated. Um, and so that's, that's not a direct hardship, but I think, uh, Christian mentioned that when they get the chance, they're, they might be revamping, um, you know, the entire code, not just the part about the covered parking, but about the parking requirements for different uses. You know, it's not, as in the covered parking, we feel it's not as important as it used to be. Cars are not entirely made of metal anymore. There's a lot of composite materials, so you don't need to park it, um, underneath something or inside of something to keep the car in good condition. Um, if somebody's got a 68 Chevelle, this is, and they want to park it here, this is not the apartment for them. And so, you know, the modern cars, I think, help. We, you know, we were concerned about if, if it's covered, are the commercial users going to want to park there or are they going to think it's not for them? Um, you know, that could be handled by signage, but it could create, um, a lot of confusion for commercial people. And, you know, um, we, we didn't want this to turn into something that uh, turn into a commercial or retail place that people don't want to go to because the parking is confusing. So that's a potential economic, you know, or edge of hardship for a commercial tenant. And then if it is assigned, if it becomes assigned, people tend to use it to store stuff. Or, you know, they're going to park their motorcycle there and then they're going to park their car on the street. And, um, you know, that's part of the reason why we incorporated the dedicated storage for each unit. So, you know, if you had a dedicated, you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to store stuff in your dedicated cover parking spot. You've got your own, your own storage. So that, that was our thought process there, but.
What's the additional incremental cost to, uh, adding the, the covered parking?
Uh, it's, it's probably like on the order of $50,000. So it's not, not a small amount, especially for, for guys like us, but it's not, um, not really a deal breaker.
Yeah. Uh, well, I guess I'd just say, just as, as a matter of my own perspective, I, I, I don't, I, I think that staff has got the, sort of the, uh, legislative analysis, uh, correct. I, but I tend to agree with Mr. O'Connell that, um, the, the requirements, although being correctly applied here are, I don't know that they make an awful lot of sense, particularly given the intent is that the parking be available at least up to the date everyone, uh, not limited to, to residents per se. So I, I, I just don't see the logic of it. It's a little unfortunate, but, uh, that doesn't speak to the, uh, you know, whether or not a hardship has been shown or the feasibility, infeasibility has been shown. So, uh, it certainly sounds like something that's right for a legislative, um, analysis, but that, I think that probably exceeds our, our mandate here. Uh, Commissioner Big Stick.
Yeah, another one of my, it, it's probably obvious questions, but I want to make sure it's as obvious as I think it is. Um, during the non-business hours, anyone in the neighborhood could still park in that spot. And specifically, I'm thinking in terms of the firehouse across the way. There are often gatherings there, uh, when we're not experiencing a pandemic. And I would imagine once we're through this, uh, there will be many gatherings there again. Um, is there any reason why people visiting a gathering at the firehouse across the way could not use that parking space during the off business hours?
Uh, there wouldn't be any, uh, physical gate or anything that would prevent them from doing that. It's not something that we've, you know, uh, sort of offered to do as part of this application. That doesn't mean that we're not opposed to it. I mean, the firehouse does create a parking issue, provides zero parking and a lot of people show up. And, you know, I personally don't want to have parking lots, you know, that sit half empty all the time. So it's not, uh, I, I, I do think that's something that could be worked out sort of on a neighborhood or community level, right? And it can be coordinated too, because if you have a big event, you can say, hey, we want to, you know, mark off 10 spots for us. And if that jived okay with the, the commercial tenant, that would be, that would be, I don't think that would be an issue with us.
Yeah, as I'm going through my internal deliberations, it seems that's one mark in asset to the, uh, community who otherwise might not feel it's an asset. But if you're actually helping with parking at some point, um, that, that's a feather in your cap, I would think. So that's, that's a mark in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Well, that's all the, uh, the hands I see right now. So I, perhaps we, we get to a place where we might start thinking through whether or not we can, uh, frame a motion that might, um, that might, uh, get a, a second and, and perhaps, uh, enough votes to, to pass. Uh, excuse me, um, Commissioner Big Stick, I see your hand.
Sure. So now that we've asked many, many questions, um, for all the questions I've asked, I don't feel like I've done a lot of deliberation aside from the last 30 seconds on my last question. So, um, I, I have some opinions and not all of them are a mark in favor. So I, I wanted to voice, um, my concerns as well as, uh, where I think that this could be an asset to the community. I truly think that in many ways this is an asset to the community. So I, I haven't done a, a, a quippy cute little story for a while. So I figure I'd lead in with that and then go from there, um, with critique. So, um, as I was pulling up today to, um, just check out the site, uh, as I do. I'm walking around and there across the street at, uh, uh, Shoreside Drive, um, is a friend of mine. And I think to myself, perfect old high school friend. Um, she is not one of the people from the group that have emailed us perpetually all day long. Um, I can get a little bit more of a, uh, unbiased, slightly removed. So cool. Hi, friend. What's going on? And, um, as we were discussing it, and these were people who are living right across the way, um, more or less in alignment with what my one critique is. Um, she left me with this, um, request for developer. If it should so happen that while excavating, you wind up, um, digging up the llamas that currently resided there. Um, she would very much favor, and she lives at 291 Shoreside Drive, she would very much favor having the skulls, should you find them? She's, um, actually an avid animal lover and, uh, does work with the zoo. And, um, so if, if you should happen to run across a couple llama skulls or even one, uh, 291 Shoreside Drive, she would be very happy with this. So that being said, what I was discussing with my good, uh, high school friend was, um, she will be staring and her husband and child will be staring at the chunk of the building that presumably is the largest. And, um, as I walked in, I, I was reviewing those pictures and I, I'm very grateful that those pictures were there, that it kind of gave an idea of what the scale of this might be. Looking at the size of it, uh, I, I think that it's, it's a big enough project to safely say that it, it is much bigger than a lot of what's in that area. And the, um, critique that's been coming en masse, that scale is an issue, I think. It is a critique that bears, bears, um, noting. Um, so specifically for me, the, the last chunk, the third chunk with the, the three stories, that's gray. For me, I, I don't think I like that it's three stories inherently. And that being said, before I go too far down that road, the other thing I noticed was like, as I'm trying to conceptualize the brick, I kind of like that color scheme. It kind of gives us more earth feel to it. And it's this long thing of brick, uh, which again, there's a question of scale, but I, I feel like my own sense of aesthetics is living with it fine. And then I hit this huge gray thing. And for me, it goes from this kind of organic feel to this non-organic feel. And I appreciate that, um, aesthetics can be subjective, but that, that was my feeling and kind of my friend who will be right across the street, the neighbor staring at this, um, was kind of in agreement. Her husband was in agreement. So that, that reinforced my thought process that if it's possible for this to be a color other than gray. And as I was driving back out, I was looking at that other, uh, building being built by the shopping center. And again, big gray thing in the middle. And what occurred to me was this other metaphor that's kind of like, um, almost it, it plays a trick with the mind. If it's, there's something more earthen about it. If that were more of a brown color or even getting toward a green, I wouldn't be seeing a giant piece of charcoal in the middle of this thing between a field and the shopping center. I'd be seeing something that reminded my brain of a tree more. And somehow my brain would kind of disregard it as being, um, this big giant gray box. So just as I'm staring at the mockup, I'm seeing a big giant gray box and that concerns me. And then after that, I'm thinking to myself, well, I mean, looking at the interior, I like the idea of the loft. But looking at what that building looks like in scale proportion to the rest of the neighborhood, I don't like how big the building itself is. So my two thought, thoughts on that were either, um, if it met with the other two stories, that might make it more digestible on the one hand. But on the other hand, if something as simple as the color scheme being changed so that we're more in alignment with the brick facade, that right there could do a lot to just kind of giving a sense, um, even but subconsciously that it's more in scale with the rest of it. Not that I think it necessarily solves the problem, but to my mind, as I'm looking at it, huge clash and it just throws the scale way off for me. And after that, you know, I, I kind of favor the idea of bringing the height level down period, but just the color itself, I think would do a lot to mitigate that for my mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Um, Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of bring back some of the deliberation. Um, but I guess first, a couple items, um, just touching off of Commissioner Big Stick's, uh, comments and story. In regards to the skull, um, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe during construction, if there's any remains found such as archaeological remains or bones, usually, um, that kind of pauses construction and then a whole series of events happens rather than just kind of removing and gifting the soul.
Uh, certainly that would be the case if the remains are, um, human remains. Yes.
I just thought that you might be able to tell your friend that, um, just so she doesn't get her hopes up. Um, well, I guess if it's, if it's non-human, maybe it's, but, um, in regards to, um, Commissioner Big Stick mentioned the, the gray siding. I personally, I don't see too much of an issue with it. Um, especially with the renderings, the rendering is really helpful to kind of visually see the scale. Um, in kind of opposite to Commissioners, Commissioner Big Stick's comment, I somewhat questioned the brick in context with the firehouse, but in general, I think the design is very aesthetically pleasing. Um, and especially if other people more suitable than me have, um, advised that the brick would be, uh, well incorporated into the neighborhood, then I'm willing to accept that. Um, or I was wondering what my fellow commissioners thoughts on the, uh, parking are. Um, I tend to agree with Commissioner Mablin's comment that it seems like the, the covered parking itself, although it is required for the zoning, that it almost seems a little unnecessary. Um, and I, I do tend to agree that if there's carports or covered parking in an area, it could be designed one of two ways. It could be very welcoming to, um, visitors visiting the commercial area, but it could also appear that it's meant for residential parking, which would cause more parking issues throughout the site. Um, so I'm wondering what other commissioner thoughts are on that. I would be inclined, if it's in our purview, to think of maybe considering it a, um, hindrance on the project and the developer to build it. Um, but I also understand that it is a requirement, um, according to the zoning.
If, if I could, if I could, I've been here and I apologize for being a little out of order. I know there are other hands up, but, uh, I, I, I like the approach a lot, Commissioner Berman of, uh, you know, sort of whether or not, uh, you know, sort of asking whether or not the incorporation of covered parking in some way frustrates kind of what we're trying to accomplish on the site, uh, with respect to, with respect to parking. And, um, clearly the reason we have the covered parking is because it's, um, a requirement for the residential component of the, of the mixed use. Um, in, in some sense, uh, it's almost at counter purposes. And, and, you know, we've got, uh, uh, parking that's there for the residential folks, but we don't necessarily want it used. We want it used during the day by the commercial. So it's, um, in some ways it's, it's almost, um, we're, we're, we're working in some sense, uh, in, in, in a conflicted way with respect to, with respect to that requirement. So I'm, um, you know, whether or not that is a feasibility issue, uh, there's certainly a frustration of what we're trying to accomplish on the site that, uh, is, is, is taking place because of the, uh, the covered parking requirement. On the other hand as well, I, I'd, I'd ask the applicants whether or not they want to make another trip back here or whether or not they're prepared to live with it. Given what, uh, uh, Mr. Murdock said about the, the probable need to go back and, and draft something and, and, and bring it back as opposed to just moving forward with what we've got.
Yeah, we, we would prefer not to come back and we discussed this with staff, um, when the issue came up and we, you know, both the applicant and staff feel like, uh, we can meet this requirement in a way that, um, you know, complements the building and doesn't, doesn't detract from it. And so, um, you know, that's what we would like to move forward with. And then if we want to come back years from now and apply for a parking exception to remove it because it's not working, you know, that's something we can discuss or maybe the code changes and, but, you know, I think for now it's, uh, it's, it's workable.
Thanks, Mr. O'Connell. And, and I, again, I think Commissioner Berman was certainly on the white track and I'm certainly in support of, uh, your analysis of it. But I, in deference to the applicant's, uh, desire just to, to have the matter, uh, dealt with tonight, if possible, I, I'd, I'd be inclined to just let the matter go.
Through, through the chair, if, um, we've been in session for two hours, 15 minutes. If, um, if you would like to entertain, uh, you know, a five or 10 minute recess, it would allow us to talk to legal counsel to just see what our options are tonight. And, um, at least on this, uh, issue, be able to provide some assistance to the commission.
Okay. Well, why don't we go ahead and, um, is it take 10 then? Uh, why don't we go ahead and take a 10 minute recess and we'll, uh, hopefully be at a place where we can kind of, uh, bring this thing to a, to a close and, and move on to the rest of the agenda. So we will uh, reconvene at, let's call it nine twenty-five. Five, we've been in recess for, uh, 10 minutes and we are reconvening again here at nine twenty-five. And, uh, all the commissioners who were present before our break are, uh, it looks like, uh, back with us. And, uh, Mr. Murdoch, are you, uh, are you with us at this time?
Doesn't appear yet.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, if it's, uh, you know, agreeable to the commission, we may just want one more minute to wrap up our staff conversation.
Okay. Well, why don't you just let us know when you're ready?
Thank you, Chair.
Extending the, uh, recess, uh, to allow staff to conclude its discussion.
And just to, to report back to the commission, we, we do feel that, um, there are paths forward to draft, uh, findings to, um, to go ahead and issue and a parking exception for the covered parking, if that's what the commission would like to do. Um, and, but however, we are not comfortable, um, doing that, you know, drafting a condition is one thing, but crafting those findings are another thing on the fly. And so we would like to bring that back to you. However, I did, I, the, the applicant can, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that they felt that, um, they would rather accept the, the requirement than to continue this item, but they can confirm that understanding.
Yeah. And let me ask a clarifying question as well. I, I, I mean, it, is it the case that the, uh, that the applicant could bring the request for an exception back as a separate matter after getting the project entitled, assuming that were to happen this evening, uh, with that require, with, without the, uh, the particular, you know, request for the, uh, waiver granted, uh, could they come back later with, uh, with that specific piece?
Um, they can, uh, however, I do believe that there's not a mechanism potentially to just, um, to limit any potential appeal, second appeal or request for, you know, I think it's going to open the entire matter again, rather than be very focused on this one particular issue.
So an appeal in the future wouldn't just be an appeal of the granting of the parking exception if that was all the only matter that came?
Right. My understanding and, and, um, Ms. Sherman can correct me if I'm wrong, is that it would be revisions to this project as a whole.
I see. Well, again, I, I'd leave it, you know, I'd be interested in the applicant's perspective, you know, where they want to go with this. I mean, the, the point was really to avoid having to, you know, continue the matter.
Yeah, we, we would prefer to not, uh, continue the matter. Um, and it's, you know, unless we want to have a discussion about how we think we're going to make the findings, you know, or I did tend to agree with staff that it was difficult to make this hardship finding. So, um, I wouldn't really be comfortable saying, let's, let's extend it without knowing how we can make those findings. Um, because there is still a possibility that we could do that analysis and potentially not make the findings. Um, more importantly, we do have, uh, certain obligations with the, with the landowner um, to, uh, perform in certain timelines and, uh, you know, extending this uh, for the covered parking issue would, would probably not be in our best interest.
Are you willing to withdraw the request for the, uh, for the covered parking exception?
Consider it withdrawn.
Okay. Thanks, uh, Ms. Berman, I, Commissioner Berman, were we, were we, uh, moving through your questions when we, when we, uh, took a recess?
I just have one more and it's not really a question and it likely will not impact my decision, which I'm inclined to be in favor of this project. Um, I just want to bring back my comment on, or question rather, on the coastal commission's request to effectively deny bluff protection in the future as well as almost it, I read it to be almost like accepting managed retreat for, for this property. Um, now I understand that the applicant has agreed to these requests and shows no issue with it. Um, but one thing I want to make sure, especially as we, the commission, work with city council to develop the local coastal land use plan, that we're kind of looking at these projects with some foresight in that in the future, we're going to have a new local coastal land use plan that very heavily takes into the public's concerns regarding managed retreat and, um, coastal armoring. So I just wanted to bring that up. So the commission, you know, could, if anyone else has anything to say, then I'm happy to deliberate, deliberate more on it, but, um, I thought it was a noteworthy tie to many conversations we've had in past meetings over the past few.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Um, Commissioner Big Stick, did you, uh, have some comments or questions?
Oh, sorry. That's the long one. Um, I have a little bit more comment, but I think that, um, Commissioner Hauser's hand was raised before mine was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I might've missed that. Commissioner Hauser, why don't you go ahead and then we'll come back to Commissioner Big Stick.
Okay, sure. Um, so I, um, I wanted to say that I, um, uh, agreed with, uh, Commissioner Berman that the, um, the colors were not, you know, offensive to me. Um, on the whole, I actually On the whole, I actually like the design. I like the fact that the parking is hidden behind, that the applicant took the time effort to really kind of nestle the project and really look at the surrounding scale. I appreciate the architects' recesses and different building planes, and the fact that there is different massing, two and three stories, and not just a monolithic three-story where 35-foot height women is allowed. So I appreciate that that was reduced down, and that everything has been consistent, you know, 20 parking spaces instead of 19. So I appreciate all of that. You know, with that in mind, Commissioner Big Stick, I also wouldn't mind a different color if that's kind of a sticking point for you, but I do, I do think that the height is appropriate, especially in light of kind of the monumentality of some of the different elements across the street. I also like the fact that it's housing that's affordable by design, so that the sizing of the housing is kind of appropriate to what the city of Pacifica and, you know, the surrounding region needs. I think that the site, as it currently stands, is bladed, and I don't think anyone's talked about that. I think that there's a fence that's breaking down, there's structures that clearly are in disrepair, and I think that, you know, we need to see some improvement. I also appreciate the large amount of glazing that the architect and the applicant put on the building. So all of these, I think, are really good things. I do want to hear more about the erosion control. As a new commissioner, I haven't had the benefit of being an active participant, so I think I would defer to some of the other commissioners on that. But on the whole, I think that I would be willing to support the project. I think that we're missing an opportunity to underground public joint polls. I think that that's something that a lot of cities do as a standard, and I understand that it's cost-intensive and maybe not something that we could do here, but I would like to look at that on future projects as we continue to move forward. I think that's important. So for me to want to, you know, I'm not totally stuck on any of these, but I would like to add the condition that Mr. Murdock mentioned about the retaining wall finishes. I think especially for the neighbors on Kent, that it's important that any retaining wall that's visible is done thoughtfully and with the material that, you know, is at the approval of the planning director. And I would appreciate some sort of vinyl window with, you know, I know I talked about this a little bit in my questions, but I do think if you look at the surrounding houses, I just looked at Google Earth during our break, there are a lot of recessed windows, and instead of asking the applicant to do some sort of like expensive framing for a recessed window, that doing something like the next step up Mill Guard, like a Tuscany line or something like that, is a very little added cost, but will really help. And if this was just, you know, sandwiched between other lots, I would say it probably wouldn't be visible and it wouldn't matter, but because you're an entire block, you're two corners and a center, I think that that level of detail is important here. So with the conditions on the wall and the window condition, I would be happy to move this forward, and I'll end my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser, for those comments. Commissioner Big Stick?
Thank you. And, yeah, so for me, it's tough, because I agree with all the comments that were previously made, but as somebody who finds himself in this neighborhood from time to time, it's hard for me to get past the scale issue that I'm perceiving as I'm walking around. And as I was having the conversation with my friends who were more or less agreeing with me, a part of what they were telling me was, at the end of the day, they could live with it, but something as simple as changing the color on that last chunk of building, it's very uncomfortable for me to give a yes vote to something that is that high, because I truly believe that walking around, it will be that out of scale. But even if that color were addressed, I think I could give it a yes vote, and I kind of have to swallow it down to do that. But something that's simple, because to my sense of aesthetic, it's all one thing, and that's totally this other thing, and that other thing kind of looks like this giant warehouse appended to the one thing, and that riles my sense of aesthetic. So if that color could be addressed and maybe a little better coordinated, something a little bit more earthy, I am willing to give it a yes vote, and that's where I'm standing right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. I guess I just add in my two cents, I think we're super fortunate to certainly have the technical expertise that Commissioner Berman brings, and certainly the architectural eye that Commissioner Hauser has brought to this. I really appreciate the, kind of the commentary on some of the aesthetics that are a little less obvious to me as I look at things on paper. So in deference to my colleagues' comments, I think I'd be supportive of the project. I think that, you know, the retaining wall finishes condition, I would be in favor of the window condition. Again, I'm not as clear on the need for it, but again, in deference to Commissioner Hauser's perspective on it, I'd be willing to support a motion that included that. And then Commissioner Big Stick's concerns about the colors, again, something more earth tone, I guess, was kind of what I heard articulated there. Again, I'd be prepared to support a motion that included each of those elements. I think the project is a good one. I note and agree that we're talking about housing that although not technically, legally affordable by way of any sort of deed restriction, is a kind of naturally designed to be affordable. I think that's a matter that's a great concern to us here, and it has been a concern of mine for a long time. So all in all, I think this is a good way forward. I'm in support of the project.
Chair Nibblin, if I could just maybe address Commissioner Berman's comments about the coastal commission's comments, and just kind of unpack those a little bit?
Sure.
So I think Senior Planner Murdock mentioned earlier in the meeting that, just as a starting point, that the city already, in its 1980 general plan, has a statement that brand-new construction should be developed and designed to not need protection within its design life, which this project is doing. If you look at the coastal commission's comment about that this project will not, will no future shoreline or bluff protection for this residence, and the removal of the structure if and when it's threatened, and then the applicant's letter said that the structure may be required to be modified, removed, or relocated if it becomes unsafe due to coastal hazards. So on the one hand, you know, as we all know, bluff erosion doesn't just target one particular parcel, it'll be more of a neighborhood context. And so if there are, it's this condition or this request from the coastal commission isn't impacting the neighborhood's eligibility for protection, you know, that is probably a bigger issue and a bigger discussion to have when that, if and when that happens. And then the other thing I want to say is, we already, the city already has a duty and requirement under our, under our authority and to protect the health and safety. And so if this structure becomes a hazard for any reason, even, you know, it could be coastal erosion, or it could be that in the future it's not maintained well, you know, we have abatement procedures regardless, that we will be able to use in order to ensure that the building is either made safe, moved to made safe, or if it's needed to be removed, it can be removed. So I don't know if that's helpful, but I just wanted to make those points and hopefully try to be helpful.
No, that's really helpful. Thank you, Director Formaister. It's mainly, I just wanted to, because it's such a large topic amongst the community, I wanted to at least discuss it tonight, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I don't see other hands at this point, and I'm wondering if maybe there's an interest on the part of any of the commissioners to maybe try to pull together a motion. Commissioner Berman?
Yeah, I'd be inclined to develop a motion that, I don't know if there's any flexibility we could incorporate into the conditions of approval that address Commissioner Big Stick's concerns with the three-story portion of the building. I don't know, staff, do you have any recommendation? I'd be inclined to vote yes regardless personally, but I do want to appreciate Commissioner Big Stick's comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick?
Yeah, I appreciate fully that, at least to the best of my understanding, probably the applicant would have to go back to the drawing board and rework some things. And I think that if you were to bring down that third story, I would imagine we would have to continue this to a different time. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm not willing to stymie it, if, at least as far as my vote's concerned, if there's a consensus that we can do something with the color. Again, to my aesthetic sensibility, that will, to some degree, mitigate some of that distance of scale, because it just, that gray thing really calls out how big it is. I mean, it's already, as a large thing, again, it's already, scale-wise, something that I feel inherently uncomfortable with, but by bringing that color thing into it, I feel like it's much more livable, even though, again, it's difficult for me to cast that yes vote, which...
Commissioner Big Stick, are you thinking a condition that might, you know, call for a green or an earth-tone sort of a color that's satisfactory to the planning director or something along those lines?
Absolutely. Yes, exactly, exactly.
I'm wondering how the applicant would, just for what it's worth, how they feel about a requirement like that?
Yeah, our original semittel, it was actually kind of a brown tone on the end. And I can't remember why it changed, but the color on that end has evolved a couple times, and that would be something that we're fine with.
And just so I'm super clear, I'm sorry, perhaps owing to the hour, the specific part of the building, how would we describe the portion of the building we're talking about in the, to which this color scheme is attaching?
I would describe it as the corrugated metal cladding.
Chair, if I may, just for the sake of discussion, it's certainly my assessment, and there are other ways to assess this issue. I think the more similar the corrugated siding color is, the more, from a distance, this building looks like one much larger building, rather than the contrasting colors perhaps providing some visual break from a distance and giving some appearance like it's perhaps two smaller buildings. And so to the extent that's a consideration in terms of mass, I wanted to put that out there, that factored into staff's assessment of the architecture.
So might it be possible to have multiple colors that are of kind of earth tones or greens that would avoid the kind of the massing concern you're expressing?
You know, I think it's possible. I haven't seen a full palette of colors that this material comes in, or that the material could be painted, if that's an option for treating it. Most often, I hear from folks that painting corrugated materials is not a preferred treatment. So seeing what the actual manufacturer color palette is, we could try to find a color that perhaps balanced both viewpoints. And then if we were not able to find something that convincingly accomplished that, perhaps default to what the applicant's currently proposed.
Okay, so maybe then we'd be talking about a motion that involved a corrugated metal cladding color scheme that is satisfactory to the planning director in light of guidance from the planning commission at today's, at tonight's meeting. Would something like that be clear enough to the planning director, do you think? I'm asking the planning director.
So I feel like I'm clear. We do need to draft these conditions carefully so that, you know, a couple of years in the future, you know, that, you know, everyone will be able to know what the planning commission's intention is here. And so I would be more comfortable if it included some direction in terms of where the color's going. If it's not gray, is it green, is it?
It sounded like we were talking about a green or an earth-tone preference.
As I'm staring at the markup, if, because it kind of isn't that far off from a green, so even if it were a darker green, that would be better to my sensibility. It's like where I'm coming from is, you know, it kind of looks like this warehouse thing is appended, and it's a living space, and I'm aiming for something that's a little bit more organic, a little bit more, and it blends in with that tree in the background, and whether or not that's, I kind of like the break of the brick facade, I suppose, but, you know, well, I guess it can't be brick facade period. So whatever the color is that kind of just blends it a little bit more into those earth and tones that are coming out of that corner, that's, I guess, what my sensibility is, is something that just feels a little bit more organic and a little less like a warehouse. That'll make it feel a little bit more like a home, and blend it in a little bit more with natural surroundings, to the point that that right there might bring down some of the scale issue that I think is inherent to having something that's that size in the neighborhood. Just height-wise, it truly is getting to a place where it's out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, but if it's something that integrates a little bit more with the natural surroundings, that could take some of that edge off, is my feeling.
So would it be correct to say that the color would be moving away from like a slate gray to more of like a dark hunter green color?
Sounds good.
Panic and green to earth tone, I guess, is.
Wouldn't it be simpler to just say, choose two complementary colors that are somewhat neutral, and give the project a little flexibility, or the planning director a little flexibility to finalize what those are, based on what materials are available?
Thanks, Commissioner Godwin. I think that's a reasonable point, creating some flexibility for the planning director and sort of trying to figure out how to do that in a way that sort of addresses Commissioner Big Stick's concern, and maybe what you're proposing would be a way in that direction. Commissioner Hauser?
So in that vein, and picking up on what Mr. Murdock said, I think it's really important that whatever material it is, or sorry, not whatever material, whatever color it is, that it is factory finished, so that the wear isn't an issue. And then I actually wanted to ask the chair if it would be acceptable to get the architect's opinion, since he's here, as to whether, you know, a dark green, or is there a color palette that definitely doesn't work or isn't available in this material, if it pleases the chair?
Well, thanks, yeah. Mr. Brinkman, do you have something to say to that?
Yeah, I mean, we did explore, we got some, an array of samples from the manufacturer of different colors that it comes in, that we tested on it, and the dark gray is what we felt was most complementary, with not blending and matching too well with the existing building to provide that contrast that we were looking for. There are other options we could look at. I don't have the samples here in front of me, but on the website, there are some similar colors that might be a little more earthy tone that we can take a look at.
Commissioner Berman?
I personally would feel uncomfortable defining a specific color or shade, especially because it's not my, I'm not savvy in it. I would certainly defer to the applicant's decision, or the, or, you know what, Commissioner Hauser, you seem to have quite the eye, but I wouldn't feel comfortable limiting the applicant to a certain shade. If anything, I would rather just approve the project as is, because I know that I like it, and it looks like it works, and it's already gone through a lot of vetting. So I personally would like to steer clear of just picking a color.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yeah, and I'm not, as much as I'd love to have the luxury of, you know, a color palette in front of me, we could all discuss, I'm very satisfied with the idea up to the planning director's satisfaction with the direction, that's something a little bit more with the direction that's something a little bit more earthy. And a chunk of my thought process is I'm trying to address, and I know that I'm doing it feeling miserably from their perspective, but we have a lot of feedback about how out of scale with the neighborhood this development is. And as somebody who visits the neighborhood on, you know, at least a yearly basis, if not a couple of times a year, I have my own aesthetic sense of what I'm going to be staring at when I just come from a visit, let alone having to live with it. And so, you know, this, this is just like my last effort to try and address my sensibility of what might in any way kind of modulate the scale a little bit. Because whether or not the neighborhood's voice gets heard as loudly as I know they would pray it would be, and right now it isn't being, I would hope that at least by making this small gesture of trying to, what to my mind is try to offset the scale a little bit in favor of, you know, just bringing it down that notch, maybe that might be something that helps a neighborhood live with it a little bit more than right now they're inclined to. So again, the, the language of to the planning director's satisfaction with that direction in mind is fine by me. I think I've given enough feedback that I would hope it's kind of understood where I'm going with it.
You know, the thought that occurs to me as well, I tend to agree with Commissioner Berman. I'd be satisfied with approving it as is, and I kind of understand the reason for the current color scheme. Having said it, I mean, if it's feasible, that's the concern I have, is I don't want a situation where we dictate something or provide some direction on something and it turns out that it's infeasible. I think Commissioner Hauser made the point, and maybe it was one of the other commissioners as well, that things are manufactured in a certain way and we prefer that it be, you know, sort of the manufactured finish rather than something that has to be painted on. And if it's impossible, I just am not savvy in this area at all. So I don't know whether or not there's a manufactured finish available in a hunter green or in some earth tone that would be, uh, that would be along the lines we're discussing here. But if we tied a feasibility aspect into it, I, again, I'd want the project to go forward with the gray, the slate gray that we've got, rather than having to come back and be reconsidered because of some issue with the color. So, um, it's kind of where, kind of where I am on all this. And certainly have had the opportunity to kick around all these elements to a pretty good extent. Is there anybody who would like to try to frame a motion? Or alternatively, I'd be happy to lay the groundwork for a motion and see how people feel about it.
Chair, if I may, before the commission considers formulating a motion, there was the mention of a condition of approval to address the retaining wall finishes.
Yep.
Now, I could read that for the commission's reference and incorporate it or not into any potential motion.
Why don't you go ahead and read it right now?
Thank you. A condition that we've used on previous projects is as follows. All exposed retaining wall surfaces shall have a decorative finish, which may include, but shall not be limited to decorative block, stone veneer, or colored and stamped concrete to the satisfaction of the planning director.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Again, anybody want to take a crack at this? Or would you like me to see about trying to put a motion out there?
And Chair, we also do have some proposed language from staff to address the color.
Why don't you share that with us as well?
Sure, thank you. We would propose a condition that reads applicant shall select the green tone or earth tone for the color of the corrugated metal cladding portion of the project, which would encourage the appearance of a visual breakup of the building mass to the satisfaction of the planning director.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser, was there any other factor that I, you, I think it was the window condition as well? Could you, could you give us what you wanted there?
Yeah, um, just that vinyl windows should be selected to incorporate a beveled or otherwise depth providing profile other than flat. That's definitely not the way I would word it. Not very eloquent, but something that means that.
Okay. Well, I, I think what I might, Commissioner Hauser, did you want to go ahead and take a, I see your hand up. I didn't know if you wanted to do anything with that.
Sorry, that was, that was to address what you had just asked me.
Thank you. So I, I think what I'm going to do then is go ahead and move the planning commission fines that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Approve site development permit PSD 48319. Coastal development permit CDP 40919. Use permit UP 11819. And sign permit S13119. Incorporating the condition of approval regarding exposed retaining walls requiring a decorative finish, as was read to us by Mr. Murdock, to the satisfaction of the planning director. Also requiring that the corrugated metal cladding have a green tone or earth tone, to the extent feasible and to the satisfaction of the, uh, planning director, using the specific language that Mr. Murdock shared with us a couple of moments ago. And finally, vinyl windows that provide a beveled, or I think it was a stepped profile along the lines that Commissioner Hauser shared with us and that the planning commission deny parking exception PE 18519, given that it's been withdrawn by the applicant by adopting the resolution included as attachment to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, as with the additions that I just identified a few moments ago, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. That's my motion.
Chair, if I may, could Assistant City Attorney Sharma, please offer some guidance on whether and how the, the motion and the ultimate resolution, which may be adopted, refers to the parking exception? Should it remain silent, given that it's been withdrawn? Or should the commission still adopt findings for denial?
It should remain silent now that it's been withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's my motion. Is there anybody who would second my motion? Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second your motion with the amendments that Ms. Sharma made.
Thank you. Commissioner Murdock, I'm sorry, Mr. Murdock, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
The motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. That'll take us then to a consideration item. And this is file number 2014004. Applicant's request for an extension of expiration date for subdivision SUB 22414, specific plan SP 14914. Transfer of development rights TDR 0314 and heritage tree removal authorization to construct a 24-unit residential condominium project at 801 Fassler Avenue. The recommended sequel action is not applicable. And the recommended action from staff is that we extend subdivision SUB 22414, specific plan SP 14914 and transfer development rights TDR 0314 and heritage tree removal authorization for 18 months. Can we get a staff report on this, please?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The city approved this project in 2018. The initial term of approval was for 24 months. The applicant has been working diligently after an initial delay to put together the building permit plans as well as the final subdivision map to allow this project to move forward. In addition to those two items I mentioned, there are a number of agreements that are associated with the project approvals to effectuate below marker rate housing, certain transfer of development rights provisions, deed restrictions, and other matters. In all, even though it's not a particularly large project, there is a lot of complexity to all of the technical aspects of the approval granted by the city. And so the applicant, in consideration of some delays that have been incurred working through the city review process on those various elements of the approval, has asked for this extension of time. The city could grant up to 36 months for the extension. Staff is not recommending the full possible extension at this time. It is helpful to provide some incentive to applicants to perform, in staff's opinion. And so splitting the difference of the 36 months seems to be a reasonable approach to this extension request. Typical extensions granted are for a 12-month period. And so this does give some additional time beyond the typical extensions that are commonplace for projects without subdivisions. And so the difference between 12 and 36, we thought 18 was a reasonable amount of time. Other than that, extensions are commonplace. Sometimes applicants need additional time for a variety of issues. And in this case, staff felt that the reasons for the request were legitimate, and I can attest to several of the ongoing discussions. The applicant is responsive and diligently working on all matter of requirements for the approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Big Stick.
Yeah, so it doesn't look like the applicant is on with us tonight, is that correct?
That's correct. I informed the applicant that it's not typical for them to come and speak about extension requests. It is a rather routine administrative item. So the applicant seems to have decided not to attend the meeting.
Fine. So just to triple check, the applicant hasn't offered a specific term of extension, correct?
That's correct. In the written request, there was no, no term cited.
Okay, that would have been my only question for the applicant as if they wish to reconsider and request something specific for us to consider, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any public comments on this item, Mr. Murdock?
No, we do not.
Okay. Bring it back then to the commission for deliberation. Does anybody want to make a motion on the side of? Commissioner Big Stick.
I move that the planning commission extend subdivision SUB-224-14, specific plan SP-149-14, transfer of development rights TDR-03-14, inherited tree removal authorization by 18 months to establish a new expiration date of November 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Is there a second to Commissioner Big Stick's motion? Commissioner Berman?
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
The motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. And that then to our next item, which is appointment of a representative to the library advisory committee. Could we get a, some staff background on this item?
Sure. So as you mentioned, the request is to appoint a commissioner to the library advisory committee. Recently, the liaison was a former Commissioner Kraske. The commission meets, or the committee, excuse me, meets the second Wednesday evening of every month when we're not in a pandemic. So right now, they have not been meeting. The job of the, the committee is to advise on the library project. This, the, where we are in the library project, as you all may know, is that the council has approved the conceptual design plan and we're in a phase of public education about the project. So right now, that's what the committee has been doing, is giving staff and consultants some feedback on the best ways and, and means to communicate with the community as well as assist with, you know, social media postings and getting the word out to their, you know, friends and family. We're hopeful that there will be a successful bond measure in the future. And if that's the case, then the committee will also have some part in advising on certain design aspects of the actual library itself. Once the library is constructed, then we don't, right now their charter is that the committee would then no longer exist after that point. So that, you know, the, the time commitment is one Wednesday evening a month. It's the second Wednesday of every month. And, um, yeah, we would love to get a representative.
Thank you, Ms. Waremeister. So I guess where I would start is whether or not there's anybody who would like to volunteer for this very important, this very important function. Commissioner Big Stick, I see your hand up.
Yes, and before I say the words, I just want to be clear. The next meeting would have been May 13th. But given things being what they are, the next meeting will not be May 13th. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
In that case, I'm happy to volunteer. I'd be very interested in delving in and joining the world of the library pursuit.
Okay, well, that is wonderful that you're volunteering. I guess I should, in abundance of caution and ensuring, you know, proper processes, is there anybody else who's interested in volunteering? Sold. You are the new appointee to the library advisory committee, and we really appreciate you stepping into the breach unless there's a... I guess maybe I should take a step back. Ms. Sharma, is there any need for us to take a roll call vote on this? Or is it going to be done in the way I've just done it?
If you could take a vote, that would be best.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on the motion that I will make, and then maybe someone will second it, that we appoint Commissioner Big Stick to serve as the planning commission's representative to the library advisory committee. So that's a motion. And would somebody second that? Commissioner Berman?
I second the motion.
Thank you. So a motion and a second. Why don't we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you.
May I just state that there were no public comments on that item?
Thank you. All right, so the last consideration item is the annual reorganization of the planning commission. And the recommended action here is to elect a chair and a vice chair of the, of the planning commission. And I'll ask staff to go ahead and set this up for us.
Yeah, so this is our annual reorganization. It typically occurs in April, but due to the current circumstances, we're delayed a bit. So the next set of officers for the commission will serve until next April, when we anticipate that we'll be having regular meetings. And the commission may consider each and vote on each election separately or together.
Thank you. I have a quick question, Ms. Waremeister. Who was the vice chair this, this last year?
Was Commissioner Rubenstein.
I see.
It's Commissioner Rubenstein, yes.
Commissioner Berman?
Well, tonight, including the several hours that we've been on the, or adjourned it, or not adjourned, a part of this meeting, as well as many other meetings, I would like to nominate Commissioner Niblin as the chair. I think, John, you've done a great job for many meetings, leading us and keeping us in line. And, and I would be honored to have you as the chair.
Thank you. I'd be honored to serve as a chair and if that's the, if that's the will of the, of the commission. Commissioner Big Stick?
I seem to recall that about this time last year, I was trying to nominate you as the vice chair to begin with. And so I would be happy to second that if it is a motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Could we do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Lille?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. I'm honored to serve as, as chair for the, for the next year. And thank you for your, thank you for, for the motion and for adopting it. So that thing then takes us to the position of vice chair. Are there any motions from the, from, from any of the commissioners for, for the position of vice chair? Commissioner Big Stick, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that in a year's time... Well, I was going to say that in a year's time, as I've seen us evolve, Commissioner Berman has developed a voice, and I see her leadership quality coming through fully, and I think that she would be a rather apt choice as a vice chair.
Well, I'm going to take the liberty of, I know, Commissioner Berman, your hand is up, and I'm taking, I'm going to take the liberty of seconding that motion and, and seconding everything that Commissioner Bigstick has said. I think Commissioner Berman, in her relatively short time, has made an extraordinary impact on the planning commission. We're really fortunate to have her expertise and her just calm deliberative style with us, so I'd like to second that motion. Commissioner Berman, did you want to make any other kind of a motion?
Well, thank you for the compliment. I was going to nominate Tiger as vice chair, but I'd be happy to serve as vice chair if that suits the commission.
Well, thank you. Well, Commissioner Bigstick, thank you for the motion, which I've seconded. Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigstick?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
The motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Berman.
Thank you, you as well, John.
Thank you. So that then will take us to commission communications, and I know we've got some new colleagues here, and I think ordinarily, we would have, I guess, liked to hear from you at the outset of the meeting, but I again want to take the opportunity to welcome our, our new colleagues, and perhaps it'd be a good time for you all to say whatever you want to say, notwithstanding the late hour. Commissioner Berman?
Oh, that was just leftover. Sorry.
Okay, thanks. Again, I just want to, Commissioner, and I'm sorry, I've been saying Lial, is it Liel?
Either one works. I respond to either one.
Thank you.
I'm happy to be part of the, the commission, and I previously served on the economic development and the library advisory commission, or committee, so Tiger, I'm sure, will do great on the LAC, and I'm, I'm looking forward to working with everyone on the commission.
Well, fantastic to have you. Commissioner Hauser?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm really excited to be working with you guys. I think you've done a really wonderful job, and I also come from the economic development committee, and I served under David when he was chair of our committee. So anyway.
Fantastic, well, welcome. Commissioner Godwin, I didn't know if you wanted to just say a couple words?
Yep, I'm also happy to be serving on the commission. I think it does important work. Yeah, I spent a number of years doing contracting with government agencies and realize how complex these things can be and how delicate they can, so I think it's fun to be on the other side.
Yeah, fortunate, we're fortunate to have your experience with us. Staff communications then.
Chair, I didn't want to interrupt you while we were welcoming everyone, but I would like to speak, if I may, before we continue to staff.
Of course, go ahead.
Thank you, and again, I just want to echo welcome to our new commissioners. Some of you I know better than others, but I think you all are going to be, for lack of better terminology at this late hour, fun to work with, and I look forward to it. And that having been said, I just wanted to throw in a brief word, not that I have much update from the planning side, but just communally speaking, friendly reminder, as we go through this wonderful process of avoiding the COVID, you know, we, we seem to be oscillating lately between, we might be getting a little lax, or we might not be, but wherever we are on the spectrum as we continue this journey, I just wanted to say as much kindness as we can muster for each other. Specifically, I'm working in the service industry, and I know what it looks like when, on the one hand, folks are frustrated with their circumstance, and it's hard sometimes to keep that in. And on the other hand, some of us working with customers get to experience the brunt of that, and I'm not speaking for myself personally, I'm speaking just from a communal perspective, the more we can muster our patience, our kindness, our compassion, and whatever the powers that be suggest our next steps are in maintaining our community to the best of their ability to fathom it, let's rise to our better angels to the best of our capability. And I thank everyone for being in this community with me, because being on that side, I think I'm very blessed and grateful to be living in this community in which I am. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. And again, as I said last meeting, really appreciate the work that you and your colleagues are doing to, to ensure that we're able to consume the things that we, we want to consume and need to consume to, just to carry on. So then I'm going to go ahead and move to staff communication.
So keeping in line with Tiger's comments, I just, as you guys probably know, the latest health order authorized construction activity, again, with some strict safety guidelines for work sites. So we have shifted our, our service to the community to provide, you know, permit issuance, permit acceptance, as we were already, but also site inspections to the public. The office is still closed, and the planning division continues to do their work remotely. And yeah, and then we'll, we'll see what the next order says and continue to modify from there.
Thank you, Tina. And again, I just say I'm impressed by how you all are able to carry on, notwithstanding the challenges, without, you know, appearing to skip beats, or maybe some I'm not seeing, but frankly, I'm not seeing them, so very, very much appreciate it. I think that takes us then to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Berman?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Hauser?
I'll second.
Okay, great, we have a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigstick?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. We're adjourned, we're adjourned then. Good night, everybody.
Night.